Good evening, everyone. It is six thirty and I'll call our work session to order. Our work sessions are informal and so we go directly to the agenda, but I think we'll introduce all the people who are sitting around because it's always nice to see who's coming to our meetings. And we'll go around the table first and then we'll go to the outer side. Elizabeth Kautz, Mayor of Burnsville.
Michelle Collins, City Clerk.
Dan Gustafson, City Council.
Bill Coughlin, City Council.
Jenny Faulkner, City Staff.
Heather Johnston, Burnsville City Manager.
Dan Keely, City Council.
Kara Schultz, City Council.
Jim Bradrick, Planning Commission.
Regina Dean, City Planning Staff.
Joe Murnau, Dakota County.
Skip Needhouse, City Staff.
Thank you. Welcome, everybody. Okay, the first item on the agenda this evening is the Dakota County East-West Transit Study. And Joe Murnau from Dakota County is going to be presenting. And thank you for coming.
Thank you, Mayor Kautz. And good evening, council members and staff. So again, I'm going to just provide a overview, a slightly condensed overview of the Dakota County East-West Transit Study, which we've wrapped up here and we're just talking through some of our partners on the project, kind of the results and recommendations. And hopefully I'll take a few questions here at the end as well. A little bit about the purpose and the background of the study. Dakota County, as you know, is responsible for planning major capital projects in the county such as Red Line, Orange Line, as well as the Robert Street Corridor, among other responsibilities. And throughout the course of a lot of these studies, we hear quite a bit about the need for, and the importance of connecting transit service in, outside of these major corridors that head north, south. And so these are generally speaking east-west corridors. The purpose of the study is to kind of, is to look at a, kind of a, take a ground level approach and very basic approach to identifying needs and emerging, and existing needs and new needs for trans, on these east-west corridors. And then develop recommendations for both, both the county, for cities, as well as the transit operators in the county on pursuing some, some recommendations, both for establishing service and supporting service in the county. So, and everyone does have the slides here?
Yep.
Okay, great. So some of the needs and opportunities, again, connections to the transit ways was a major one. Access to employment and services, we have a few of these major quarters where planning capital investments, but as far as the total geographical coverage, that's still not the majority of coverage. So we want to look at enhancing access off of these main quarters like the Red Line and Orange Line to other parts of the county and gaining more access to employment for citizens. As well as population growth and just general demographic changes in the county, of course, we're looking at about another 100,000 people in the county over the next 20 years. And then also the changing demographics, we're looking at, you know, generally speaking, older communities, older communities here in the county. We want to understand how those, how those changes affect needs for transit service. One other important distinct, one other important issue, as well as the differences for the two operator areas with MBTA in the western part of the county and then Metro Transit in the northern and eastern part of the county, there's no, there's no cross-service and there's no determined, there's not very good understanding of the needs for services and if there's any needs or opportunities missed there without, without service from, say, this area up towards West St. Paul and South St. Paul. So the study process, throughout, throughout the whole process, we emphasized public engagement. We had three rounds of, three rounds of policymaker workshops to help, to help set a study process and then go over evaluation results and recommendations. And the last one was just held in February. We did also stress online engagement. For a larger study like this, covering a broad area, it's hard to do, do a lot in person. So we had a project website where we had, we had a number of interactive features, such as an interactive map where people could put down where they were coming from, where they needed to go, where they had issues today with, with accessing transit or a perceived lack of transit. And we had several hundred people on, on the website providing comments as well as information on the map and that helped to, helped to direct the study. In addition to that, we had about 20 or so stakeholder meetings with different businesses and community groups in the areas, including several here in, in Burnsville. In addition to that, with some of our analytical work with the study, we had in this kind of a baseline assessment of conditions in the area with respect to land use, existing, existing and planned highway infrastructure and transit infrastructure, as well as demographic and economic characteristics, in particular those that tend to correlate with transit demand. So that can be age, that can be income levels, that can also be availability or access to automobiles as well. Generally, if there's more adults than automobiles, that suggests transit demand. So one, one example. From that, we developed, with some of that basic information and kind of our first look at the area, we developed with the assistance of the policymakers and our technical advisory committee, a, an evaluation framework with goals and measures to help, to help evaluate the various quarters that, in the county that, that were later identified. In addition to, to supplement that, we looked at, as well, transit demand analysis, where we looked at overall transit travel and overall transportation in the area and travel by automobile and kind of the, more of the, kind of volume of flows in each of these quarters and get an understanding of how much of this could be, could be reasonably served by transit, given what's, what's there today, where people are going within the corridors as well as outside of the corridors. And then lastly, recommendations, we, we looked at, we formed recommendations for all the quarters we looked at. Some we suggested, we suggested, you know, looking at, you know, newer enhanced services and then a handful we looked at, we didn't make any suggestions on based on various reasons if it's just lower population density, poor pedestrian accessibility. One of the key points to note here is that the recommendations here are at a quarter level. So we looked at, we define, we define highways in major quarters, kind of on a half-mile raise, radius where, on which we looked at the different, you know, population and transportation characteristics. We didn't get to the detail of a, you know, of, of route level recommendations where we say, we'd establish a route that's going to go on this, you know, this, this road and this road and run at this frequency. So that, we see that as a later step. So the project goals, we had established again with the assistance of both our technical advisory committee as well as our, as well as our stakeholder workshops and identified eight, eight project goals. And these are not in order of importance, but we, the number one goal was improve mobility for transit-dependent populations, look at quarters that can be served cost-effective, cost-effectively and efficiently, maximize regional transit connectivity, maximize overall ridership, respond to present and future travel demands, support with existing and planned land uses, improve access to employment institutions and services, and then quarters that are, that offer safe, convenient multimodal access and facilities. One to point out here, goal number two, the cost-effective and efficient corridors, we deferred that, we, we defined that goal, but in, we generally agreed that we would defer that to later stages in a planning process when we have a better idea of what service might look like. Without getting into those details, it's a little difficult to, to understand very well how, how cost-effect, how efficient a route could be. So with the assistance, assistance of the TAC, we identified 15 initial quarters and we were pretty, we're pretty, we aired on the side of inclusion here with, with a number of quarters we evaluated. It wasn't that much additional work throughout the county from, from up in West St. Paul all the way down to Lakeville and the Farmington area. In addition to that, after we took a first pass at the evaluation, we also identified fifth, or 10 additional quarters that were shorter versions of the initial corridors based on how, how they fared and, and looking more at, looking more at the more developed areas of the county. So part of the, part of the study area contains quite a bit of, quite a bit of rural land. The, after, after doing another pass at the evaluation, we, we rated each of these quarters on each of the eight goals. We had a number of different measures associated with each goal and we evaluated on each, each of those and then rolled that up into an aggregate score. And on, on the two slides here that have, that have the evaluation results, generally the, the green or the, the more filled-in circles are where quarters rated higher and the yellow and red is where they didn't rate as well. So on, on this, the higher, among the higher-rated ones were Butler Avenue up in West St. Paul, Minnesota, or Trunk Highway 110, Yankee Doodle Road, Cliff Road, and then County Road 42. And that was the variation between Dakota County Technical College and Mystic Lake Casino in, into Scott County. From, from that evaluation process and then a little bit more discussion with our, with our technical advisory committee and with our, with our policymakers, we, we made recommendations for five of the 25 quarters for, to move ahead for further consideration with the transit operators. And that was Wentworth Avenue, Trunk Highway 110, Yankee Doodle, Cliff Road, and then County Road 42. The, to give them just a little bit of detail here on, on some of the ones in, in Burnsville, Cliff Road, that corridor was defined between I-35W and Yankee, excuse me, Pilot Knob Road into Eagan. And today, today there is some service in, on the, on the Eagan side of the, Egan side of that corridor, but not Burnsville. Service, again, when we, if we were to consider this in, in the future, we, we would look a little bit off of Cliff Road to determine what the optimal routing would be, or that, rather, the, the operators would. So we have, we have the line on here today, but in reality, we'd be looking a little bit, a little bit past that to understand what would best serve the needs of the community. Some of the, some of the reasons for recommending, looking at, looking at Cliff Road a little bit further, again, there's a higher, you know, generally a high level of destinations on here and employment throughout the length of the corridor. There, there are between Burnsville and Eagan generally transit-supportive land uses planned for, for Cliff Road. And then also the, the transit connections with, with Cliff Road, an additional Red Line station being planned for Cedar Avenue and Cliff Road in the future, as well as, as well as the Orange Line Burnsville Station or Traveler's Trail Station in the future as well. We'll have two high-frequency services crossing the, crossing the, crossing, crossing the corridor and that would be a good opportunity for people to, to transfer and have a little bit more access via transit. So County Road 42, the, this corridor again is defined between Dakota County Transit, excuse me, Dakota County Technical College and Mystic Lake Casino in, in Prior Lake. The, some, some of the reasons for, for this recommendation was that there's a number of opportunities for new development, redevelopment along this corridor. So there's some undeveloped areas in Rosemount, a good, a good deal more development, employment, industrial development in Apple Valley and the general Johnny Cake Ridge Road area there on 42, as well as Mystic Lake area and then the Burnsville Center area with a lot of new, a lot of new, new development happening. So there's the possibility as well on this quarter for improvement in operations with, with bus pullouts as well as transit signal priority, as well as pedestrian, pedestrian improvements with some of the future plans for, for Highway 42. In addition to that, there are also connections here for both, for both Red Line and Orange Line as well in the future. And throughout our public involvement, this was generally the most strongly supported corridor as well. And I'd say probably the top, probably the top one out of, out of all of those. So as far as the quarters that were not recommended, again, there is 20 of those. And in Burnsville, McAndrews Road was, was one that was not, was not recommended. This, this corridor was defined from, from, from about 35, excuse me, from about 35W to, to, I believe it was, it was Diamond Path and Apple Valley. And in general, the eastern side of this corridor, there is generally poor pedestrian accessibility and, and higher speeds. So there is not, not, not very much in the way, in the way of pedestrian safety, but then also destinations as well. There is more, more generally, general need for transit to the east, excuse me, to the west of County Road 11, but there is some existing transit service today there provided by, provided by MBTA with Route 444. So the general, the overall corridor, however, did not, did not rate that well and we won't be, at this time, looking any further. A little bit about some upcoming steps, as I noted, we, we had put together recommendations and shared those with our policymaker work group. And right now, we're making some final recommendation, making, making some final changes to our final reports. So that will be ready here with the assistance of the TAC here in the next couple of weeks. We'll be looking here in May to, to adopt the, to adopt the study with, with our county board. Following, upon completion of this study, there will be a number of things depending on the quarters, what, as far as advancing the study and some of the recommendations. As I noted before, a lot of this is, will be taken at, I guess, at an advisory level for the two transit operators, Metro Transit and MBTA, to, to consider with their existing, existing service and then also their plans. They, they will have to, you know, weigh this against some of their other needs, some of their other planned routes, the express services. And in general, the, the barrow is going to be a little bit higher as far as evaluating and justifying new service or changes to service because we're looking at a little bit broader, broader, I guess, scope of different services here where we, where this study kind of just looked at the east-west corridors. So that, that's, that's one step. Another step will be with the counties as well as the cities, looking at improvements as far, as far as operations. I noted there's the opportunity for, on 42 to look at, to look at some operating improvements on some of the more congested areas of 42. That might be a possibility with some of these other corridors. There, there, again, with, with, with corridors like Cliff Road and some of the other busier corridors, there's going to be the need for, for, you know, pedestrian safety, but then also with, there's going to be an opportunity with some of, some development and redevelopment of the area to consider, or give a little bit more, closer consideration to site design and accessibility. A lot of buildings, you know, they're, they're set back a little further away from the road. Some of the, some of the circulation onsite isn't, is sometimes not very safe. There'll, there'll be the opportunity there to consider, to consider transit on these quarters, maybe a little bit more closely in, in the process, get some of the operator, operators involved as well with their planning staff who can speak a lot and give a, give a probably a little bit more critical eye to, to the needs of transit and, and the development process. So with that, I'm happy to take any, any questions.
Okay, so we understand that you're going to have this goal before the, would be your rail authority and then to the board?
Mayor Kautz, it would actually be toward, just, just to the board. The, this study is a little bit outside of the scope of the Regional Railroad Authority.
Okay.
But it will, will be, will be, you know, accepting this study. Again, the, as, as far as the, as far as, you know, the actual implementation, we, we do see ourselves as, you know, responsible for, you know, some of the, some of the recommendations in here, but a lot is, those are outside this, outside the county. But we will be, again, cooperating with the operators on, on those and their future planning processes.
Yeah, I think that is important for our people to understand how this study and who are the stakeholders and the providers of service across the, the county on the east-west. Because right now, Dakota County is not a provider of transit.
Correct.
And you don't see yourselves buying buses and providing transit, correct?
That's correct.
I think we need to make sure that our citizens understand that you're providing the service for looking across the county and see how we can get people to their destination points, especially to jobs. Okay. But the thing is, you're working with stakeholders like MBTA to deliver that service.
That is correct. So a, as far as, you know, in, in the future, it's, you know, we'll, we'll be working, we'll be cooperating with them as far as what, what the county can do, but as, as far as the determination for service. And they have a lot of, you know, they'll, they'll have a lot of issues and, and concerns as far as implementing the service and how, how it integrates into the rest of their system. And that's really the best approach for planning transit services. You have to look at, look at it as a system-wide and how, how well, you know, the routes fit together as far as transfer opportunities because that, how transit's used, especially in a suburban area, that's generally the case. You need to look at opportunities for, for transfers and having, you know, comfortable stations for, for people to wait in. And that, so they'll, they'll look at our recommendations. They may need to, you know, implement and, you know, take part of that quarter, but it may need to tie into a station. So again, what we have here for quarters would, you know, would, could generally be served, but would ultimately have to be changed a little bit to provide some of that connectivity to other services in the area.
The other part of this is to manage expectations? This is a long time for this to get implemented because you haven't talked about how it's going to be funded.
That, that's correct, Mayor Kautz. The, 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 you know, as, you know, there, you know, regionally, there is, there's some issues with, with funding right now with, with MS. So there, there's, there's that. And then there's, you know, there, there could be the need, you know, there could be the opportunity rather to, you know, to, to rearrange service. I can't, you know, say if, if that's going to be a possibility with the operators. But we will have to look closely again as, as far as modifying any services as well. We see, we see some opportunity there to modify existing services, but we do need to tread lightly because there are, there are existing riders out there today and you want to, even with any changes or improvement, there's still the, the danger of disrupting services for, for existing riders. And that's, that's not what any operator wants.
No, I just want to make sure because there are people who are interested in service to the Technical College. And this isn't going to be happening anytime soon with regard to this transit corridor and service delivery across 42.
That, I, I would have to say, I, I wouldn't, it'd be a little bit difficult to say that right now, how, what, what the timeline with that would be. And I know MBTA, they, they do put in for some
Yes.
temporary funding for, for operations. And there's the opportunity that, you know, something like that where, where we at least extend some existing service could be a possibility. So that, that's possible as far as when, you know, as far as when Orange Line comes into service as well, there's, there's the possibility to, to reassess service as well when there is a, when there is a big change in, or big improvement in service with a major project. Generally, that's what happened with, with Red Line, with the light rail lines up in Minneapolis and St. Paul. They, they had, they had a kind of a, a reassessment of local lines around that route. There might maybe be the possibility to do that, but that would, again, would be at the discretion of MBTA or Metro Transit when considering these.
Any other questions for Joe? Questions? Thank you very much for coming in. I know I sat through these policymaker meetings with regard to this process, so, yeah. But I just want to make sure that our citizens understand that this is a study. We have some information, but it's going to take time.
Correct. It's the first step. There's, there will be a lot more to consider.
Okay, thank you very much and thank you for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item is the Orange Line. And Regina, I think you're up on this one.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This is really a check-in opportunity. I know in the past, Steve Albrecht, as well as myself, and I think Jenny, in the past have given an update in regards to the Orange Line. And we've also had Metro Transit available. Specifically, what we'd like to talk about tonight is station naming and station design. It's important to, to know that this is currently managed by Metro Transit. The proposed Orange Line itself and any Orange Line extension is something that would be out in the future by Dakota County. But it's important to, to think about the entire region when you're thinking about station names. There is a concern with Metro Transit for their riders and just for the general public that there can be confusion with names that might be similar within the entire transit way system. And so unfortunately, we don't have the PowerPoint for the viewing public, but I understand will be available later. But I did want to provide you with a list of example names that are currently planned for the Orange Line. And if you look at Minneapolis and Richfield and Bloomington and Burnsville, there's a variety of stations. Mainly, the station identifier is a street name, a numbered street. We have Third Street, Fifth Street, Seventh Street, Eleventh Street, and Lake Street and, and Forty-Sixth Street in Minneapolis. I believe Sixty-Sixth Street and Seventy-Sixth Street are within Rose, or sorry, Richfield, American Boulevard and Ninety-Eighth Street in Bloomington. And then Nicollet Avenue Station and Burnsville Parkway Station here in Burnsville. And so And so what I understand from Metro Transit is that geography or naming of a station should really relate to the geography, which you can see a good indicator by the actual street name. And what I understand from Metro Transit is that because the Orange Line is along the thirty-five W corridor, one of their recommendations is to also include thirty-five W slash, for example, would it be possibly Burnsville Parkway?
Yeah.
So that there's that cross-section or cross-reference with the intersection, intersecting streets or intersection, intersecting right-of-ways. Now, just imagine that you have a out-of-town guest from another state, state in St. Paul, and you're here in Burnsville and you invite your friend to the Med Cruz for dinner. And you say, oh, take the Metro Transit system. It's great. You won't have to worry about driving and parking. Hop on and get off at Nicolat. They might end up in Minneapolis. So that's really a reason why we need to be thoughtful when we suggest any names going forward. Recommendations from Metro Transit is that you avoid duplication in the transit system for the reason I gave, that you should also avoid names of specific people. Just historically, there might be
Or buildings.
Or buildings. Typically with a name, it may be a person of great honor at one point in time and then as time goes on, perhaps maybe not so. So that, that would be a reason for maybe not giving a station a specific name. Should provide geographical context. And these names do have an opportunity to provide and to create a name that helps strengthen the surrounding area, so keep that in mind as well. As far as suggestions that have come forward, Metro Transit, through their Technical Advisory Committee process, did suggest some names to consider for our stations at Nicolat and, I guess, Nicolat Station and the Burnsville, Burnsville Parkway Station. So we have the Ames Center Station as an opportunity, Burnsville Nicolat Station or Nicolat Commons Park as suggestions. Dakota County Regional Railroad Authority, it's my understanding through staff, they had suggested avoiding specific names or avoiding building names as well. So again, thoughts to consider. Metro Transit's goal is to take feedback from not only our city council, the Technical Advisory Committee, other stakeholders, the county, MBTA, businesses in the area to help formalize what some of those final names might be. Ultimately, the Metropolitan Council would be the final decision-making body, as I understand. We do have a list of potential station names that we've developed as a staff for council consideration. I can certainly walk through all of them if you'd like, or if there's a couple that
I think we can, we've read it. And, and what's also good is that you also have put in the Burnsville Center Station. So for long-term, instead of doing it again, get all of that done now and then move forward.
Yep.
Okay, so what we can do is go to the Nicolat Avenue Station first. And you have several names that you have suggested. And, but let's look at your first statement that says we need to look at geographical area. So let's look at who's going to be using it and who's going to try and find it. So what is the best name that will pull people to that geographical area? So when I looked at all of that, I don't know about what the council thinks, but Burnsville Heart of the City Station. Then you get away from the Nicolat thing that may be conflicting with downtown. But what are the other, what are other council members think as you look at the names that are presented? Yes, Dan?
I agree with Elizabeth. We have spent a great deal of time and money branding that area of our city and that's what it should say when people arrive that they're in the heart of the city. And I think we're going to spend a great deal of time developing the rest of that area as well, so.
Burnsville Heart of the City.
Yeah, we'd definitely identify where you're getting off at.
It's all about branding, isn't it? It is about branding, yes. Bill? Okay. Take care.
So I asked Burnsville residents on Facebook what they would suggest. And in no particular order, and this is all of them, Money Pit, Heart of the City, River Valley, River Ridge, Traveler's Trail, Blaze, and Midewakaton for the tribe that was here.
Yeah.
So those were their suggestions that they had.
Okay. And, and what do you say? Because one of those fit the Heart of the City that
Yep. Yep, definitely. I mean, there was Heart of the City. I also noticed Traveler's Trail is, is also on there. That was a staff, staff suggestion as well, so.
Okay.
Thank you.
Dan?
Well, I'm, I'm kind of like you. I'm, I'm biased to the Heart of the City, but I'm also looking at this through the eyes of the travelers who don't come from around here. And what will that mean to them? As much as we brand it, what does it really mean? So if we want to incorporate Heart of the City, I would, I think the street name is pretty critical. So Traveler's Trail Station or Traveler's Trail Heart of the City Station makes sense to me. I don't know that the, the city has to be on it because I think people understand when they're crossing the river, they're going into Burnsville. So I don't know if repeating Burnsville, the city they're in, is absolutely necessary. Could be, maybe people appreciate. But if you look at the list of all the other names, it doesn't say
Being proud of the city is what I'm looking at.
Yeah. I mean, if you look at, you know, all the others, I mean, none of them have a city in them. They're all streets. And so
We can be unique.
We can. I mean, traveler, I would go Traveler's Trail Heart of the City Station because I do like the branding of the Heart of the City. I'm not against it at all. I'm just looking at it through the eyes of the users, not through our biased eyes. And I think
So you're saying Traveler's Trail Heart of the City? Okay, you're one, three of us.
Well, there you go.
No, we need to go consensus. So, so let's have a conversation here. Dan G. and Bill, I mean, I, I, Traveler's Trail, I just want it to be
Does it flow better if it switches around? Heart of the City, Traveler, Heart of the City at Traveler's
Yeah, I mean, you can invert it, wouldn't matter really.
At Traveler's Trail.
Heart of the City, Traveler's Trail.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I believe Ms. Dean was going to also say that we can suggest more than one. So if you had two that the council liked, we could certainly forward both of those. We could tell them which was the
Well, yeah, I, I know that it'll get there. I'm just trying to see if we can get consensus. If not, we'll give two.
That's fine. I just wanted to make sure you knew you had options.
Because we have two, but I'm just going for consensus. If we don't have consensus, then we will suggest the two.
Thank you.
Yeah. So Dan G., you said?
Well, I said maybe if we reversed what Dan said, that might flow better as you're speaking about it. I do have to agree that there's a bias in the Heart of the City for all of us because it's our
It's a brand.
It's a brand. It's a total brand. But if you're coming from Minneapolis, they don't know it's the Heart of the City. They, they
The question is, what, Heart of which city?
Yeah, that's why it's Burnsville. Yeah, that's why Burnsville, Heart of the City. That's why I, Burnsville, Heart of the City, but
But I definitely think the Heart of the City needs to be part of that name. It's, it's absolutely, whether it's just that or we add another, one more word.
Yeah, see, Traveler's Trail, Heart of the City Station, it doesn't say
And under full disclosure, I live on Traveler's Trail, so I'm not trying to be biased toward adding Traveler's Trail. It just happens to be where the station is.
Actually, it's right on Nicolat. Okay, Bill?
Well, that's true.
Totally cool with any of it. It's not that big a deal to me.
Yeah, okay. So, yeah. Kara?
Yeah, I mean
We can, we can give it, put in both.
Yeah. I, I think, I think both of those are great that we are kind of looking at.
Okay. So let's go with Burnsville, Heart of the City. And then the other one is Traveler's Trail, Heart of the City.
Or do you want to invert that to Dan's suggestion as Heart of the City?
City, Traveler's
Traveler's Trail. So Heart of the City, Traveler's Trail.
Would the word
And the other one is Burnsville, Heart of the City.
Sure. Madam Mayor, would the word station remain with that? Is it Heart of the City Station?
Well, it's that what they'll do. Yeah.
Play around with it, see what
Yeah. Metro Transit, actually, Metro Transit will put their own, I think they'll say station because it's a hundred and twenty-first station. Yeah. They'll put station on it. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, Burnsville Parkway Station. What do you all think? That's, that's the tagline on the top, so.
That's the current name identifier that
Okay. So what do you all think?
Burnsville Parkway Station is the current name that we've submitted? Or we're just referring to it as a tag for now?
That's the current name that Metro Transit has on their maps, on their planning.
It's an identifier because it's right there in the parkway and it's on the intersection?
I prefer I thirty-five and Burnsville Parkway because that's, that's consistent with, for the user. That's consistent with the naming that's gone on throughout the entire system. So I think
So I thirty-five, Burnsville Parkway?
That's, you know, Burnsville Parkway certainly is the identifier. And I thirty-five, it doesn't have to have I thirty-five because all these other ones don't say I thirty-five and Seventh, I thirty-five and Twentieth and et cetera, but
Sure. Kara?
Yeah, I like that. I also like the forty-two commons.
And the Burnsville
Oh, that's the next one.
That's the next one.
Oh.
We're on Burnsville Parkway Station.
Sorry about that.
Okay.
Yeah, you know, and I, either, either the Burnsville Parkway, but I don't think it matters if you put the thirty-five in front of it or not.
Yeah, it's on thirty-five.
You're okay with it? You're okay with it if it identifies the intersection?
Yeah. I mean, either way, I don't, I don't think you can go wrong with that.
Okay.
I agree.
I thirty-five, Burnsville Parkway? Okay. All right. I thirty-five, Burnsville Parkway.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one is the Burnsville Center Station.
Did you want to give a second option in case they choose?
Let's just go with one.
The current one is not bad. This is one
Oh, we'll just give them our identifier.
They'll make their own decision anyway. They kind of do that.
Yeah. Okay. Kara, you said Burnsville Center Station, is that what you
Forty-two Commons.
Forty-two Commons Station? Okay. Dan?
I like Burnsville Center Station, believe it or not.
Dan G.?
I could go with either one of those, actually.
Yeah.
With the redevelopment that's maybe going out there someday. Who knows what it's really going to be?
Yeah, I know.
Me as well, either one.
So why don't you just put down both? So forty-two Commons and Burnsville Center Station? Because I agree, the Burnsville Center might be there, might not be there, but, you know, let's see what they say. Because I was looking at County Road forty-two, but forty-two Commons is like forty-two Commons. Both is, yeah. Okay. You got both of, what you needed?
Thank you for your input on that.
We're moving right along. Thank you so much.
Well, we're going to move on to station design now.
Oh, yeah. We got this and now you want to, yeah, oh, yeah, what do we need in terms of?
I wanted to check in with council again. What we've discovered is that both stations are within right-of-way. And so according to our codes, technically our zoning and land use are not applicable. However, we've been working with Metro Transit staff and they are certainly open to any ideas that we bring forward for consideration in, I would say, around the station for this specific platform and structure itself. I'm not sure how much input we have, but we could, again, certainly discuss any architectural changes with them, any suggestions that we might have. As you can see, the station itself has a very sleek design, modern, I would say, style, a flat angled roof and has your standard features like the typical Metro Transit branding for signage. It has a bike rack, benches, heating for the riders, lighting for safety, map information, real-time information so people can know when the buses are arriving and not. And that's pretty standard, not only for both of our proposed stations in Burnsville, but throughout the entire alignment so that people aren't necessarily confused when they get on and off the bus. They always know that they're, this is a Metro Transit Orange Line Station. We have, as a staff, encouraged that the Metro Transit take into account Heart of the City design
Design framework.
Framework ideas as well as our city code. And we have submitted a letter to Metro Transit highlighting some of those ideas and some of those features that we would like to see incorporated in some fashion, whether it's on the platform or nearby within the larger property or larger right-of-way. So that might be landscaping, decorative lighting, places for public art. And, and they do seem receptive to, I would say, outside the platform proper. And I just wanted to share that with you and certainly ask for any additional feedback or input that you might have as you're looking at these stations.
Okay.
We're, at this point, they're sixty percent designed, so we're not one hundred percent. There's still some opportunity to provide that input.
Dan K.?
They look good. I mean, I, I don't know what else really we could add. I think they're one of the nicer-looking bus stops I've seen, I mean, the pictures of these two.
Okay.
What, what would you like to see?
Well, I'd like to see some of our architectural features. But this looks
In the form of what? I mean, it's almost like you're
No, this looks good.
Yeah.
Just some minor things that give it a brand, but I haven't, I see, the thing is, we don't, you don't have some of those pictures that you, you had sent to Metro Transit.
Not included in your packet, no. I do have them on the PowerPoint which show examples of the high-quality architecture that we have in Heart of the City, some of the features like the stonework, the brick work, the public art features, the landscape, high-quality landscaping, decorative patterned sidewalks.
So it's, yeah. It, it, it really, it really looks good. It just, but if it's
There's no question that it's very, there's a lot of aluminum.
Utilitarian.
It's very utilitarian. It's nice, clean, modern, utilitarian. So if you want to warm it up with, as Ms. Johnson pointed out, maybe some limestone treatments.
That's indigenous to us in Burnsville.
Yeah, that'd give it a little more Burnsville character because we do have a very large limestone quarry in Burnsville. That might be the one thing that would give it a little more character. I don't know how, where it would go, how it'd put up. I mean, could suggest some things, but I would leave that up to the designers.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. Kara?
So if we do add some additional elements, are we picking up those costs?
There is a potential that Metro Transit can say no.
If it's outside of their budget, but it fits within their budget, they're okay.
It's possible that they can say no altogether, that because of maintenance, because of operations, that this doesn't, just doesn't work. They could also say, yes, you can have the upgrades, but city, you will have to contribute.
Or if what we're asking is a replacement and it fits within their budget, because they did that in Eagan.
That could be a possibility as well.
And then they did a whole lot more in Eagan and Apple Valley on the, on the Red Line. Yeah. So.
So for instance, the pillars that hold up, you know, like doing limestone around those, if we said, okay, give us a limestone support pillars around
How much would that cost?
What would that be versus what's there? And what's there looks like just aluminum pillars?
Yeah.
Probably
And would they allow that? Because I thought you said we could do the design elements outside.
It, it's very possible with my experience and background, working with Metro Transit in the past, it's very possible that they can say no, that this is
Sure.
too much of a maintenance and operation issue. No, we're not going to do this.
Yeah. They can tell us. But they're giving us the opportunity to say something, so.
Yeah, I, I'm definitely not opposed unless, of course, it's an additional cost to us. And then I take an entirely different view of it.
Good. Dan G.?
I, I think it's worth asking. It's certainly the entrance to the Heart of the City off of Nicolat. You've got fifty thousand cars a day driving by it and it's in plain view of everybody. So it's, the nicer we can make it look, if it doesn't cost us a fortune to do it, I think it's certainly, all you can do is ask.
That's what I say. If you don't ask, you don't get. Bill?
Well, you know, I'm always very utilitarian, but if it doesn't cost any more money, it's fine with me. If it costs more money, it won't be fine with me. That's simple that way.
If it costs more money, it won't be fine with me, that's, um, simple that way.
Okay, the consensus that you're getting is, ask?
Yep.
Doesn't hurt to ask.
Do they want specifics?
I did hear, um, limestone pillars, um, as one, um, element.
Yeah, because you have some ideas that you had presented in your PowerPoint.
That's, it's kinda small, you need some readers to really.
I know, and that's why my readers are on my face. Too bad we can't have the, our.
The overhead running.
Overhead is not working, but sure, ask.
Thank you, council.
Okay, anything else? Did you get everything you needed?
I do, unless you have anything else to add for me.
Anybody have anything else that they wanna add? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
We're moving on. The next is the Planning Commission Work Plan Priorities, and Jenny and, uh, Mr. Bradrick.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Um, I will try to be brief on this, and I would suggest that you go to your, um, iPads and pull this up in the background, because the PowerPoint is too small, even for my young eyes to see, which aren't so young anymore, but anyways, um, had a chance to talk to staff, circle back with all the things that are on our, on our plates this year, and talked to, um, Planning Commission Chair Bradrick about the priorities and how we could make things work for twenty seventeen. So what we're proposing to do is to move, um, three of these items to twenty eighteen, and I'll just read through these real quickly, um, upkeep of private residential neighborhood entrance signs, illumination hours and days for signs in B zones adjacent to or across the street from residential homes, and then, um, review material standards for fences, cor, where there's corrugated metal fabric mesh for screening. So those, um, were items that, uh, we all felt could move to next year. And then, we, that would keep us on track through second quarter to do things that we already, were on twenty sixteen work plan that staff is already working on. And then, uh, we do have some funds budgeted for planning consultants, um, like we do every year. Uh, went out and got some estimates to do that work, and we can, we have enough to cover, have a consultant help us look at the architectural, um, materials, and then the process for changing the ordinance. If somebody wants to allow something new, this was brought up last year by the council, directed to be put on the Planning Commission's work plan, so this has been hanging out there longer than the other items. So we certainly can do that with the funds we have budgeted. And then, if staff were to pick up the rest, um, given the current schedule of activities we've got, we can get started on new items in October. And so, um, the second priority item would be zoning uses and process for comparison with surrounding cities. This, this gets to, um, attracting and retaining businesses, uh, we can get started on that fourth quarter. And then, of course, we've got our comp plan, which the work is ongoing and ramping up here quickly, so. I don't know, uh, Mr. Bradrick, if you wanna add anything to that?
Um, no, I think we, we kinda discussed at the end, we bounced back and forth between, uh, looking at the exterior materials and making the comparison with other communities on zoning, and so we, I was asked to pick.
Yeah, and I would add, if we wanna make that one a priority too, our consultant can do that, but we'd have to add six thousand dollars to our budget, if we wanted to do that now, instead of waiting till October.
And where would you get that money?
Um, we would ask you for an increase in our budget, our department budget.
Okay.
Or we can wait till October, November, you know, when we get started, yes.
All righty.
Do we have any money in the bank?
We have reserves.
So we seek your feedback, if you wanna accept this revised plan, or, and/or if you want us to, um, um, increase the budget. I know Kelly's doing a budget amendment coming up next month, so if that's the direction, we could add that and get started on, um, priority number two, which was the economic competitiveness land use discussion.
We're just into March, I don't, I don't anticipate that you have some extras there in your budget. No, it's only March, it's only three, okay. Um, council, what are your thoughts with the, uh, new items and the priority list that Jenny and Jim has, uh, presented to us? Bill?
It's fine with me, and I'd be against spending the extra six grand, cause it all matters.
Yeah, and, and these are things that, uh, they're not urgent, but they're. It's good, it's important to have it in place, but it's not urgent. Dan G?
As long as it gets us through the building season, where we can help these developers move their processes along.
For me, that's it, and that's why you're, you're doing the, um, your priority, and this is the materials. Because that's what they need to know, and it's always good for us to make sure that we're all on the same page, they know what the expectations are in moving forward. Kara?
Yeah, I, that number one priority is that building materials, so I was happy to see that. Sting is the priority, so, yeah.
Okay, Dan?
As I mentioned before, I thought it was just a matter of retooling the list, not adding budget, and I'm glad to see that we're able to get to everything, it just takes a little while, but m- my preference would be the, um, the competitiveness be a little earlier, but we're already a quarter into the year, so we're gonna get to it.
Yeah, okay. You have your direction? Everything's good? Anything else?
We're good.
For me.
Thank you very much.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Thank you for your time, Jim.
Thank you, and thank you for coming in, uh, Jim, for this. Okay, the big discussion, business subsidy policy, Jenny and Skip.
You know, that's when we get to the big one, she moves away from me.
I know what she, do you not wanna sit next to Skip?
No, I got all my stuff here, no, we decided Skip would give the presentation, and I will be, uh, the firing squad for questions, perhaps, so.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Um, I will religiously attempt to follow your handout of the slides, so that we can, we can, we can stay in sync.
That's the one you sent in the Dropbox?
All of them are in the Dropbox.
Okay, I found the business subsidy one, but.
Okay, I didn't get, uh, well, I don't have it.
We should have one more that looks.
In the Dropbox? She had just sent this one out, but it's a subsidy, but I didn't, I didn't see anything else.
Do we need additional handouts?
No, it's okay.
We're good.
We're good. Um, what we would like to do tonight, Madam Mayor and council, is, um, briefly cover what is our current business subsidy policy, then cover some options that other cities utilize, um, um, on top of some of the things that we have in our policy, and then enter into a discussion, and hopefully get some direction from council as to whether or not you would like any further, um, discussions and our review of some of those additional options. Our current business subsidy policy, um, gives us two tools, tax increment financing and tax abatement. Our current policy also allows us to use those two tools in the redevelopment of aging, uh, retail strip centers. Very quickly, very briefly, um, when you look at tax increment or tax abatement, what we are doing is we are capturing the increased tax amount that the development generates, and we are returning that to the developer to offset their cost, and those costs are typically costs that are higher than normal for the development. There is a but-for test that we require our developers to go through, and to basically prove that, um, without this subsidy, they could not do the development. We have not used either one of these tools in the redevelopment of any of our aging retail strip centers. And the reason why is that, um, when the developers crunch the numbers, they don't work. Um, neither TIF nor abatement actually work in the renovation of a strip center. In a couple of cases, we've actually crunched the numbers and found out that the increment we would give them would not cover the cost of actually applying for the increment. The only difference between tax increment and tax abatement is tax abatement is the city portion of the taxes only, so typically that will be a smaller, uh, amount. In our history, we have created eight TIF districts. Five of those districts have expired. TIF District Six, which is heart of the city, will expire in two thousand nineteen, so that will, after two thousand nineteen, we will basically have two TIF districts, seven, which is the Minnesota River Quadrant, and eight, which is the one we just approved, um, earlier this year for a one parcel industrial equities. In the case of tax abatement, we've only actually used tax abatement twice in the city, um, once a number of years ago, one coordinated business built their facility, and for the AIM Center. Typically, TIF and tax abatement works best when we're talking about new development. And if you think about it, if I have a piece of property that is vacant, has no building on it, it typically will have a low tax value. I come and build a building on that, I substantially increase that tax value, so that gives me a nice increment to deal with. If there is a building on that parcel, and I take that building down, the increment of the land and the building is what I'm being judged against. So when I build a new building, I don't really increase that increment that much. So it, it gets hard to use that tool very often when we're talking about redevelopment. As I mentioned, we run into this with tax abatement, is that a number of times, especially in aging strip centers, you, you crunch the numbers, and actually, what we would give you wouldn't cover the cost of you applying. Um, in two thousand and fifteen, the Economic Development Commission had a panel of developers come before them, and one of the questions we put before the panel was, what are some of the things that you believe as developers would assist the city of Burnsville in spurring development? Um, a couple of ideas they came up with is that the city should consider some sort of an incentive or subsidy program to assist them in tear down and, and rebuilding of, of buildings. There was some discussion that back during the recession, the city of St. Paul actually, actually used pooled TIF for grants to help finalize some spec building that was going on. If you recall, back during the recession, most of the spec building construction stopped. St. Paul did use some grants to, to, to further that along. Another idea that the developers, uh, put on the table was that we should be willing to partner with them when they're looking to do either upgrades or renovations of, of existing properties. Another item, rem, assist them in the removal of buildings, in the demo of buildings. Help them out when they wanna, when they wanna demo a building, because if they look at a piece of property in Burnsville, and they have to demo a building, and they look at a, at a vacant parcel in Lakeville, there's a cost differential right there. And that could cause them to go to, to Lakeville. If we offset that cost differential, it equalizes the equation a little bit. They suggested that we possibly consider some sort of assistance to startup businesses. They also, um, suggested that we assist the developers when they're trying to meet one of our plans. So if we have specific types of development, for example, in heart of the city that we're looking for, would we help them and, and incentivize and subsidize a little bit of that development? For example, on the triple A land, one of our long desires has been a hotel. We've had a couple of proposals that have come before us, and then eventually faded away. They would suggest that possibly if we were willing to somewhat subsidize that development, we could drive that hotel development in heart of the city. Um, they also talked about a little bit of rebranding and, and upgrading of the city's image, primarily helping to do something with the older commercial buildings that we have. When you look at, um, a developer now, their, their home run is what is known as a shovel-ready parcel. Basically, they are looking for a piece of property that has no buildings on it, is completely graded and flat, and has the infrastructure in place, and they would like to be able to go from purchase agreement to the laying of their building foundation within sixty days, which means they would like to go through the permitting process within sixty days. That's, that's their sweet spot, that's what most of the developers would like to have. Anything that goes beyond the sweet spot adds time, costs them money, and potentially has them go elsewhere to do their development. Now, some of the options that we have found that, that other cities have, and, and all of these cities have TIF and abatement at their disposal, so these are options in addition to what we currently have to play with. One of the options that some cities have is the creation of business districts. And these business districts are looking for certain types of development, and in order to drive that development, they will, they will give grants or low-interest loans. The city of Minneapolis has a number of business districts in which they will do this. And they, they are looking for specific types of development in those districts, so they are willing to subsidize to do, to attract that type of, uh, development.
Now, talk about what monies they get to do that.
I'm sorry, Madam Mayor.
Um, what Minneapolis does to have that fund, they levy it through the EDA.
Correct, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yeah.
Um, another option that some cities utilize is what is referred to as a business development grant, in which they are doing something to assist a new business, uh, get up and running. That could be some money towards their initial lease, that could be some money towards their initial, um, purchase of equipment. For a number of years, um, the city of Farmington did this with CDBG money. Um, there are some, you know, handles on that money that you have to deal with that sometimes make that a little tough, um, to, to put into place. Other cities have looked at assistance to maintain and upgrade older buildings, especially buildings that might have code violations. Typically, what you'll see is, is, is a building gets older, as long as the building is full and has limited vacancies and is cash flowing, there is no incentive for that building owner to typically do any type of upgrades. Unfortunately, what sometimes happens is the building starts to deteriorate a little bit. All of a sudden, they notice they have vacancies, and then they're at the point that the cash flow isn't enough in which they can then make the upgrades. The one-on-one building at the corner of Burnsville Parkway and Nicklet is, is a prime example of that. And that building ended up going tax forfeiture, and it's, it was, it was fifty percent vacant for a number of years, and then after the tenants were vacated for the one large development that fell through, that building sat there for about four or five years with no tenants, until it was, uh, purchased in the fall of last year. And it was purchased in the fall of last year because it, the county was willing to sell it extremely cheap, um, after the tax forfeiture. Uh, a number of cities have some variation of revolving loans. Revolving loans can, at some point, become self-sustaining. Basically, you are, we are making a loan, uh, to a business for a development, that loan comes with an interest. As they pay the loan back with interest, we develop a pot, and that, and at some point, we no longer have to actually fund that pot. The loan, the loan and interest is refunding itself. Obviously, the risk to something like that is that we've become somewhat bankers and we somewhat have to, uh, judge some, um, business, uh, whether the business will or will not be successful. Another option that a lot of cities use, and we ourselves have used this option at some points, is land assembly. The picture that accompanies that slide actually is the heart of the city. Um, it is a part of the heart of the city in which we went in and purchased all of the land, except the two parcels along Nicklet that have Red Lion Liquor and the gas station. We put in Nicklet Commons Park, we then did an RFP for the rest of that land. Uh, we actually went up to the plate three times, we struck out three times because no one wanted to build the Performing Arts Center. So then we said, well, we'll build the Performing Arts Center. We then back, went back with an RFP for the balance of the land. We actually got a master developer, and we were within two days of signing a purchase and development agreement, and the master developer backed out. At that point, we said, uh, we need a parking deck for our Performing Arts Center, so we better build the parking deck. So we went and built the parking deck. Med Cruz came and approached us, they had talked to us once before, and they did buy the parcel that they are currently on and built their, their facility. Uh, and then the piece that's left is the triple A land, which most of this land was triple A when we purchased it. That piece is left, that's the piece we're marketing. There are other parts of heart of the city in which we did similar lands.
The land that we bought came out of livable communities funds.
Yes.
So people need to know, that's where those, that money came from, four million dollars.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Came from, uh, livable communities funds to purchase the land that you're talking about.
That's correct, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Another option that some cities have used is actually to use the land that they own themselves as a subsidy. Uh, the picture on your handout is actually the land we own at Newton and County Road forty-two. The land for sale sign has been on that property for as, almost as long as I've been here. The problem that exists with that piece of property is that it is actually a hill. And we have an estimate that, um, I happened to look it up today, the estimate is actually ten years old. We have an estimate that it would cost between five hundred and six hundred thousand dollars to bring that land to a developable stage. We have an appraisal that is about, um, eight years old, that says if the land was totally at developable state, so the retaining wall was in, the fill was in, it was nice and level and flat, that that land would probably be worth somewhere between four hundred and fifty and four hundred and seventy thousand dollars. So in effect, we need a half a million dollars to basically bring a piece of land to the point at which it'd be worth a little bit less than a half a million dollars. One of the things that some cities do is they will actually sell land such as this for a small price, possibly a dollar. Um, and obviously, if, if a developer invests a dollar, they're then very willing to invest the money to make it to a developable state. As I said, this is land at County Road forty-two in Newton, this should be very desirable land if it was flat, because it's on County Road forty-two. Um, other types of options, um, there are some cities that have created economic development foundations. They are basically a foundation in which they ask, um, um, members of the community, possibly in their wills, to leave money to the foundation for development. They hope that, that if they have a couple of large, uh, business owners, that they may do something like that. Obviously, that takes a long time to create, and it obviously has a lot of legal ramifications that have to be dealt with. We did, um, when we were doing this for the EDC a couple of years ago, we uncovered a city in Texas that actually has an economic development sales tax. It's a very small tax, but they collect them. It's a very small tax, but they collect the money and use it for development purposes, and they have driven a lot of development with that sales tax. A number of cities over the years have had incubators. Basically, an incubator provides either a manufacturing facility, a warehouse facility, or an office facility for a new business at a very low cost. Typically, the incubator will allow that business to be in the facility for somewhere between three and five years, and the lease rate will go up each year as the business hopefully is growing. At the end of whatever the prescribed timeframe is, they expect the tenant to leave the incubator, and many cities require that that tenant then either build and/or lease space in their city, and there can be penalties if you do not. Incubators typically do not turn a profit. As a matter of fact, if they break even, it is usually considered successful. They are really to drive new business startups and incent those businesses after they're starting up to stay in their communities.
The incubator is owned by whom?
I'm sorry?
Owned by whom?
The incubator can be owned by a variety of different interests. In most cases, they are typically owned and are subsidized by the city in which they exist.
That's what I want people to understand. When we're talking about this stuff, it's not just, you're talking about a facility that the city would own.
I would liken an incubator to the Ames Center. It's something that we own, and if it breaks even, we're very happy. But in many cases, it may not break even. Some cities provide loan guarantees. Our Economic Development Commission actually developed a loan guarantee policy a couple of years ago, which was presented to council, and at that time, council elected to not move forward with it. The policy at that time said that we would guarantee up to $50,000 of a loan. It was during a recessionary time when a lot of businesses would be close to getting a typical loan but wouldn't quite make it, and in many cases, it was because of some of the recessionary aspects, but that is an option that exists. None of these options that other cities utilize are options that we currently utilize. And part of our discussion tonight is, do we want to utilize any of those options? Staff would recommend three possibilities for your consideration. Staff would recommend that some sort of a fund be created to assist in the demolition of buildings. Staff would recommend that there be some sort of a grant created to assist in renovations. And if council were willing to go a little further, staff would recommend that we possibly consider the purchasing and assembly of parcels of land to drive development. One of the funding options that could exist for these options is our current EDA levy. We could levy up to an additional $400,000 per year and stay within our statutory requirements to utilize, if we wanted, different options that we've discussed. Currently, our EDA levy pays for all of our economic development programs, so that's our open-to-business program, our greater MSP contribution, and then any types of promotional work that I do. It pays for our staff, which is basically myself, and it helps offset the Ames Center construction debt. So we do have existing, if you're looking for a funding option, we do have that option that we could utilize. The other question that was put before us at the retreat was looking at land use changes in our land use policy. As we go through the comp plan process, we are doing that. Vacant Parcels, HLC, MRQ, Lark Industrial, or as we're kind of renaming it right now as the East Cliff Road Business Campus, the Ridges Campus, the Burnsville Center, and Aging Strip Mall, all will be part of that discussion, and as we bring forward the comp plan for your review and discussion, any suggestions on land use changes and policy would be brought forward. As many of you probably know, today is Pi Day. So I couldn't, I had to have a pie chart. This pie chart is for illustrative purposes only. The red depicts our utilization of TIF. And while we have done a great job in utilizing TIF, our ability to utilize TIF is going to be diminishing in the future just because it's not going to work as well. The green is our utilization of tax abatement, and as I've said, we have used abatement very little in the past. We've actually only assisted one business with abatement. We do, in our business subsidy policy, we do allow for the abatement to be more than the increased increment. Council actually has the ability to abate any taxes that are currently being paid. So if you wish to use that as a subsidy and give back taxes that are being paid right now to the business for anything, that could be done.
Right now, we only abate hours.
Typically, we only do the increment increase when we talk about any developers. We have never had discussions about abating taxes that they're already paying, which is actually taking money out of our pot. The purple depicts open-to-business. That is a tool that, while it's not a subsidy, it is a tool that does help with our emerging businesses and especially our smaller businesses. The blue side of the pie chart is basically illustrating the needs and our opportunities that could exist now and in the future that we really have no options to go after, and those could be some of the options that other cities provide to their businesses and their developers. At this point, Madam Mayor and Council, we would certainly stand for questions, and then we would ask for some sort of discussion and direction if you want to move any further discussing other business subsidy options, or if we want to once again table this as we have in the past.
Okay. Councilmembers. Okay, I'm gonna go with Dan G., then Bill, and then Dan K., and then Kara. Yeah, because you didn't put your hand up fast enough. You know, those guys all put up their hands.
It'll happen.
Yeah.
Skip, some of the things you've been talking about, do you have a list of some of the cities where this has been successful for them, or kind of an idea of what the rate of return on investment when cities will do this?
We do have a list of cities in which these options are there. We have not gone so far as to ask them for their rate of return or anything else, but certainly, if you wanted to go further, council member, we could come up with that type of information.
Okay. Bill?
I don't have a question. I just am philosophically against it, and I would still support, you know, TIF and abatement in its present form, but I'm not willing to consider any of the other options, and I've been consistent with that since I've been on council, but I appreciate all your heavy lifting on it.
Dan K.?
Excellent presentation, Skip. Very well, as you walked through the whole process, the history, how TIF works, abatement, et cetera, I'm sure it was very educational for everyone viewing now and in the future. There's a lot of mystery around TIF and tax abatement that I think you just cleared up. Question. First of all, business subsidy, the word subsidy implies taking tax money from everyone and giving it to somebody else. One of the things that we've talked about in these discussions in the past that I've brought up is, number one, the city has to be made whole. Dan, I think was getting that, like, what's the return on investment? So one of the things that the city can do, where sometimes the private sector cannot do or provide, is low-interest funding. So in a way, we become a bank, but the prelude to that is, I know where these are currently used. An applicant for a project has to bring so many jobs. I mean, there's criteria, strings attached, so many jobs, economic development, property value, et cetera, but also, they have to prove that they can't get the money anywhere else. In other words, they can't qualify at a bank, they don't have any private source of funds. And so, and these deals get done with a multitude of different sources and different things. And so, what we would be is not a main source, but a piece of the puzzle. But the bottom line is, risk has to be low. There's always risk. I mean, if the city were to offer anything, I mean, even what we do today, there's a little risk there because you can't control the private sector. But our borrowing capacity and our borrowing cost is very competitive compared to the private sector. But we don't want to get in the business of taking the private sector lending business. So again, it has to be proven with, you know, three rejections from local financing options, proof that there's no private funds elsewhere, et cetera, et cetera. So it comes through, which that whole underwriting process creates a bit of a challenge. And I know the Port Authorities go through all that and some of these other business support or business investment programs. So what I want to come down to is, looking at the Burnsville open-to-business, and you see the little purple slice does take about, I don't know, 10%. How do we build on what that currently is in its form? Because it seems to be very focused to small business types of applicants. So is, are what we're really talking about here is the next level of mid to larger size type of?
That's not their sweet spot.
The open-to-business?
Yeah.
Oh, no, I get.
Yeah.
So they take care of, or they're a solution and an option to a smaller business.
Correct, Councilmember.
When we talk about, under this, what I want to refer to is now, under this discussion of business subsidy, and I really hate the word subsidy being used, but I know it's in the spirit of what we're talking about, it's more of a, you know, economic development, a business EDC investment or policy. So what we're really talking about, like the land that's available, bigger projects, bigger jobs, that's where I think I want to focus our attention in finding the solution. So if open-to-business handles deals of this smaller size, it's the medium and the larger size deals where they have this type of difficulty. Maybe the bigger deals don't have the difficulty because they have the financial wherewithal to get it, but those stuck in the middle, they're too big to qualify for open-to-business, they're not big enough to really fund it through major banks or relationships, and they're kind of stuck. And they really don't, you know, if they can't get the money at a bank, they don't have private funding, they're pretty much, you know, out of options. And so, if the city were to have a policy to be able to offer with qualification and underwriting, low-interest loans to be a piece of their funding puzzle in exchange for the jobs and the investment in the city and the property and all that, ultimately, number one, the city's going to be made whole. The business would have to go under for us to then take acquisition, and we'd have a piece or, you know, a lien against the land for us to then get our money back. But in the case of the business succeeding over time, we're basically going to get all our payments back plus interest. And so, it's not a subsidy, but a funding source. And to me, there's less risk. We utilize the asset that the city has, which is low-cost borrowing, and the ability to borrow at a very low cost, which in some cases, the private sector can't offer. To me, that's the direction I'd like to see us go, as opposed to taxing people to put a pot of money to say, here's 50 grand as a grant to invest in your business to help make it work, because the 50 grand's gone. As a grant, we're just giving it. And that's, has been in all my, all our previous discussions, my difficulty with the word subsidy and coming up with something where we tax and then give it to somebody else. That's my struggle from a philosophical standpoint, similar to Bill's. So I'm trying to think of how we can just leverage our ability to borrow at low interest and fill a piece of the pie that can get a project done without flat-out writing a check and saying, here, here's some of the taxpayer and our city's money for your project to get going. It's tough.
Well, yeah, because open-to-business, it's a new business coming in, and then they're getting consultation, and then they're probably, if they have all of their papers in place and they've done their financing, then they're going to be leasing space in our city.
Which, there's an indirect economic development that comes back around, right? And actually, what open-to-business puts taxpayer money at use and/or at risk? Where's the funding?
Open-to-business is not funded by taxpayer dollars. It's funded by, basically, investment dollars, foundation-type dollars.
Oh, great.
It's a partnership, remember. And Skip sent us all of that. So the thing that's difficult that you're saying is because you're saying, we go and borrow the money, and then we lend it to the folks. So it's, we're using our capacity. That's a little difficult to do. Now, we're going to be, then we're going to be passing on the interest and everything else to that business, and I don't know whether that's something that's going to be competitive with any of the lending institutions, because I get what you're saying.
It really, it does come down to, I have a project, I have my own personal money, I've been able to get bank financing for, and now I've got that last 20 piece.
You're trying to close the gap.
Right, it's gap funding. That last 20%, I can't get from any private financial institution, you know, getting a loan from the city.
I'm gonna go to Kara, then to you. Okay, thank you. Okay, Kara, then I'll get back to you.
So, these are quick, but, okay, so when you're looking at the economic developer panel that was discussing things, when you're talking about partnering for upgrades and renovations, when you're talking about partnering, what exactly do you mean by partnering?
I think Councilmember Schultz, they were referring to either some sort of a loan and/or a grant available to a building owner who needs to do renovations or upgrades. So if we look at some of our older buildings, and a building owner comes to us and says, I might be willing to do some renovations to my building, some upgrades to my building, if the city would assist me in some fashion. So they're saying if there's a grant on the table or a loan process on the table. In a grant situation, there would certainly be a need for a match from the building owner. That match could be one-to-one, two-to-one, three-to-one, whatever it is, we would have in our policy. There, as Councilmember Keely has referred to, I mean, that grant is money that we are giving away, so to speak, for the renovation. The flip side of that is, how many buildings like 101 are we comfortable having that are empty for four or five years because the renovations and the upgrades did not occur to keep the tenant base flowing in there?
Okay. In the options, and it says, you know, for the creating business districts, what kind of businesses did they find that that mostly attracted? Because it sounds like, if I remember the business districts, they're smaller businesses. Is that correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
But then we have our own program that helps smaller businesses, so that's really not something we would look at.
We have a program that assists small business, but it's not similar to a business district program. In a business district program, they are providing funds to a business to locate in that district. Open-to-business does not do that.
Yeah, I get that, but it's same group targeted. Like, we are using our program to target the same group, which is small businesses. They chose to target small businesses in a different manner. Correct?
Our open-to-business program helps a startup. I don't know that I would go so far as to say it's targeting it, because it's not a driving factor.
Okay.
For example, if we wanted certain types of technological businesses down in the MRQ, open-to-business would not be a driving factor to create those. If we had some sort of a program, I'm trying to stay away from the word subsidy, to drive those specific types of business, that would be a business district program.
Gotcha. Okay, and then, when we're talking about code improvement grants, and I get what you're saying about, you know, keeping businesses up so that they don't become...
Lighted.
Yeah, people don't abandon them. But I have a problem with doing that for, I mean, that's corporate welfare, flat out And yet, we wouldn't do that for citizens. We have a lot of, not a lot, we have a few citizens that are in predicaments where they absolutely need to make some changes to their home. It's blood out of a turnip because they don't have the money, and so we would tell them, tough luck. But, oh, you have a reason on that.
We have a program. I looked at Jenny, and I said, we have a program.
She's on that 360, right? But I know we also have someone that...
No, Jenny, because we do have a program that's worked very well for residents.
There's a couple of programs that we have in that regard. So we work with the CDA, and they have some low-interest loans or grant programs to help income-qualified. The city also has a policy regarding code enforcement issues. If someone can't bring it up to code, we will give them the, front them the money to do it and assess their property for it. So that's a city policy. We've used that a couple of times.
But if people also want to upgrade their property, we would also defer all of their fees.
The permit fees.
Their permit fees and all of that, so that they can do the work.
Although I do believe we have a certain situation happening right now where evidently none of that is able to come into play.
Councilmember Schultz, I'm not sure what you're talking about, but in code cases, we have always offered that as a last resort. If they can't get funding elsewhere, kind of like Councilmember Keely was, we want them to be in compliance, and we will be the mechanism tool to help them get there. Sometimes they choose not to do that.
Okay. I'm wondering if some of that is coming into play with that, because I'm... Okay, I'm wondering if some of that is coming into play with that because I'm getting a couple notes on that one.
It's possible.
So on the revolving loans, and you said it can become self sustaining.
That's correct, Councilmember.
And do you, do you know of cities that have done that, that they are at that self sustaining point?
Brooklyn Park is at that self sustaining point.
Okay, I was wondering if it was Brooklyn Park or Brooklyn Center. Okay. And, let's see, nope, that's enough. I've, I've clarified enough on this. I know you guys have questions, so I'm not going to hog it.
Bill has a question, then Dan G has a question.
No, I don't have questions, I have comments to.
Go ahead, make your comments and then I'll go to.
For, you know, along the lines, I think it's a very bad idea. You, Councilmember Keely said that we'd make loans to businesses that have been turned down by a bank, say, any bank, by three times and that we would take a lien to protect our interests. Well, as you know, I'm an expert in both bankruptcy and, and I've represented a number of banks. And the problem with that is, or gap financing. First of all, no bank that I know of or have ever represented would not, they'd require that if the city was going to participate, the city would have to take a lower, a lower to the first mortgage of the bank, a subordinated position.
We would be subordinated.
So, and, and, you know, that means that the, you know, they get paid first and the city may or may not get paid if there's a gap issue next. I just can't imagine the, the city would ever go into the financing business of some business turned down three times and that we somehow then would go through the whole valuation process, go out and send an appraiser to evaluate the business to make sure the taxpayers are truly protected. And that's protected with attorney's fees for closure, there'd be enough equity to, to protect the city's interest. I mean, it just, it, to me, it just, you know, I think in, you know, in a, in a wonderful world, it may, that's okay. But the reality is, of course, if we have another dip, as we did, another recession or something, then we're in the business of foreclosure. And foreclosure is an expensive process. So then we're the city of foreclosure on certain businesses. And if we foreclose, they'll save employees, if they, you put some strings on hiring employees, whatever, then we're in the business of laying those employees off through the, through the foreclosure process. I just think it's, it's not a, it's just not a good idea. I know that we suffer sometimes when there's some property in the market sitting empty. But that's just, to me, that's just how the market is and that's, sometimes that's the way it goes.
Okay. You had a, you had your hand up and then I'll go to Dan G afterwards.
Clarification, gap funding includes bank financing. The, the rejection letters would be for the, the balance of the funds needed to make the project go.
Then we'd still be subordinate though.
Which is, exactly, we would absolutely be subordinated. And maybe Skip can clarify Brooklyn Centers or Brooklyn Parks' experience with that revolving fund. It sounds like that's exactly, some form of that is exactly what that is. Funds, funds are set aside, loaned and then, and then through the repayments and interest and income, et cetera, then it sort of self funds and doesn't require taxpayer money. Along the same lines, ultimately what I'm advocating is that we consider, not consider grants. In other, in other words, just taking EDA tax revenue and going, okay, here's, you meet the qualifications, here's some money. So it, it still has to come back to where we, the taxpayers are made whole, even though there is going to be risk. There's always going to be risk in, in any kind of economic development investment. The one question I did have, just a follow up, is the demo fund? Demo's not that expensive, you know, I mean, it is, but there's a cost, but it's, it's certainly cheaper than building, right? So what's the, is there any experience out there with other cities, cities providing a demo? And then what cost recovery do they have? So just for an example, we go in, demo an old building, let's say it's in Lark Industrial and we, we, we helped the development, the project, it's going to get sold, we demo it. They build a brand new building. Is the incremental value of the new project going to eventually recover the city's costs of the demo? Or are demo costs such that it's going to be thirty years?
Yeah, we can answer that because Heart of the City, with all of the things that we did there, we did demo. What was the name of the bar?
Bumper.
Oh.
Bumpers.
Cancun?
Yeah.
Club Cancun.
And Club Cancun and all of that. And then i- if you saw what the city made in that fifty-four acre site was less than two hundred thousand dollars. Now we're making, and the value was twelve point three million, the value is a lot, is over a hundred million now. And the return on our investment and all of that is close to a million dollars.
So the answer to my question is, yes, it can actually pay for the cost of demo.
We've been through this stuff before, so Jenny?
Madam Mayor, I was going to say yes, but it depends on what goes in its place, right? So in Heart of the City, the city did take down a handful of buildings. We were able to use TIF because a lot of those buildings were structurally substandard, right? So we qualified for TIF, that's usually a challenge with that tool anyways, it is very restrictive. And then the value of what went in its place is a lot higher on almost every parcel. So there, there is a va- a value increase in it. And Skip and I have had some more recent encounters on some projects where they wanted to bring retail, tear down an office building and put in retail shopping.
That's, does it work?
Or go to Greenfield in the city next door, right? To put in a grocery store. The increment there, if we were to have this, if it was a use you wanted. So in some cases, you may want to do this to get a use that you want. So if you want a brand new grocery store like our neighbors have, that may be worth it. Now, the increment isn't going to be there when you tear down maybe decent retail for a brand new retail or office building for a brand new retail. So it would depend on what the prerogative is of the council, how bad you want that use. And I think that's what Skip was talking, if there's a specific use that you want, then there's a cost to be had for that.
What are we willing to pay for it?
What are you willing to pay for it, exactly?
So the example of the Heart of the City that you brought, Madam Mayor, where there, there was a couple hundred thousand and now it's millions. That was, that was a great example that you'd like to repeat. But if we were to go into the Lark Industrial or that retail project up in Difley and seventy-seven and, and go in and demo that, the replacement investment may not create an increment that would pay us the demo cost back for twenty years or thirty years as opposed to, I don't know what the Heart of the City payback came, but it was probably pretty quick.
It, it was very quick. And when we look at land use and when we're getting into the comp plan, we're proposing some mixed use zoning on some of those potential redevelopment sites so that the value is there by the market, as long as you're okay. So the highest value is going to be multifamily. So any place where we could take a corner gas station or a dilapidated strip mall or something.
For the Kmart.
The Kmart.
Kmart, demo the Kmart?
High density residential, you're going to get a huge increase in value to pay for the demo itself. Yeah, so that's another way of going about it.
See, but with the Heart of the City, there was a vision and there was a design framework and there was expectation and everybody understood what that would be. And so when the Kmart building was demolished, we had a partner called Opus. So a lot of these things, it's putting all of these deals together and, and having good partnerships. And then we had a housing with Sherman. We needed kickoff on some of this stuff. And then Stonebridge came into the picture. It becomes an effect where people see it and then they continue to come in. Jenny?
One last comment on the, on the demo is the timing. Because I don't, the city is at the benefit compared to a private developer where we, as we have in the past, sat on land until we get a development, thinking of the AAA and a hotel, right? If the city wants to get involved and to create that increment and acquire sites that go tax forfeit, like the building in Heart of the City, we chose not to, but we could have if, if we would have gotten that direction, to tear down the building, so now the value is zero. And then sell it at some point where that increment is created. You know, then you've created, by us holding it, because our holding costs are very minimal compared to a private developer. There's an opportunity there too, the time value of money. And we have a little bit more time than we, than we seem to have money than the developer does. But, so there's just another tool to think about in us holding those sites if, if this council would ever choose to do that.
I'm going to go to Dan G, he had his hand up first and then back to Bill.
Well, Brad, I'm glad you brought up the demo fund, Dan, because I, what you were talking about, the loans, made me a little squeaky still. But I know there, I know we have properties that, it's cost prohibitive to purchase the property and tear it down and start over again for some of these developers. If they can take a one point eight million dollar complex over here and turn it into a fifteen million dollar complex or ten million dollar complex, the tax on that's going to be so much greater once that's done, that investment. It may take us ten years to get the investment back, but we're going to get the investment back and it's going to continue to expand our tax base. And I've watched that happen in the Twin Cities. St. Louis Park's a great example of it as well. I mean, the things they're doing over there, they're very, they're very aggressive. But I tell you what, for a town of forty-two thousand, they're making that thing work and that, that tax base is growing like crazy. Sometimes, you know, cities have to invest in themselves. But you have to, when we, when we do that kind of thing, you talk about what you're investing in, you talk about what our rate of return is and what we're expecting it to be down the road. And, and I think, I think our citizens get okay with that kind of stuff. They don't get okay with just taking money and saying, X, Y, Z, we're going to give you a little loan here to start your startup business and see how it goes and that. But when there's purpose to what we're doing and we can put it on papers to what we're doing, I think people get very comfortable with that. And I'd really like to take a good look at that kind of thing because you're absolutely right. The, the Heart of the City was a perfect example. That was a blighted area when I moved in here. I taught my daughter to drive in the Kmart parking lot with sleeping bags up against the building where the homeless would stay. And now it's turned into a pretty nice project and we're, now we're looking at a very nice project that's about to go on a corner.
Used to be where.
Where that bar only sold for two hundred and some thousand dollars when we bought the thing. Now that property's worth a lot more today.
Used to be crime with all the drug, drug transactions in the parking lot of the old Kmart that I hated. And the other is that, all the graffiti that, all over the place.
It's, it's been proven in Burnsville itself, if we invest in ourselves, we can, we can, we can do a lot better than we're doing.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm going to go to Bill because he had, and then I'll come back to you.
Sure.
Okay.
I just think it's very risky picking winners and losers and demos. When you, when are you going to demo something if, if some company A is over there, but, or company B is over there? I, I, to me, I think a good example is may, yeah, maybe if we had a demo fund, we would have done something on the building on Nicolet and Burnsville Parkway. Well, thank God we didn't because, you know, yeah, the county sold it for not very much money. But the developer there is, is doing an amazing job, bringing amazing things back in and turned it back into a useful, very useful building. So again, it's just, you know, unintended consequences, you know, meanwhile, how do we, who, who are we to know that we think we know better? I, I just don't think, I, I'm, I'm not for this.
Okay.
I'm just curious, one of the questions I haven't answered in all the Heart of the City stories. What city taxpayer money was used, if at all, if any, to launch the Heart of the City development from day one? Was there any land acquisition, was there any demo, was there any investments, was there any subsidies? Was there anything at all to get it going?
Grant money. We were ferocious about going out and getting grant money from the Met Council on the Livable Communities Act, under the Livable Communities Act. And we went for two, two times, two million dollars each and we got four million dollars. That's how we bought, we started to do land acquisition around that. And, and then we had TIF. Heather, you had your hand up?
I was just going to say, and the key to getting the, I was waiting for you to finish your point, but the, the key to getting the grant money though is that vision piece that was mentioned earlier is that you have to be able to tell a story in your grant application.
And have everything in place from your design framework so people know that you are ready to get things done. And that's how they, I mean, and the people who reviewed from all cities throughout the metro area, who did the review of all of these grant applicant, applicants. And, and we scored well on both points and received two million dollars at each application.
So to answer my question.
And TIF.
What money from the Burnsville taxpayers was used in the Heart of the City development from day one?
The TIF.
Just TIF, which was, that was just deferral, that was increment.
It was taking the increment from.
We didn't have that in the first place, so really it didn't cost us.
Yeah.
We just deferred future gains till later date to help.
But it was taking the increment from the development, so I always explain it to people this way.
That's a good point.
If the, if the property taxes three dollars and you improve the product on that property by seven dollars, you are taking four dollars of that and you're putting it into, to that, to increase your debt tax base. And that's where you get your return on investment.
You keep the three, you just don't get the four until X years down the road.
Yeah, you put the four into, to investing into the property and making it grow.
But for that tax increment, the seven would have never come, right?
Yeah.
There were some tax dollars that went into the PAC and I think Jenny wanted to, to clarify some other pieces of the financing.
Yeah, we did a, we did a rough calculation for the background. So the city investment was twenty-seven point one million, twenty of that went for the Ames Center. So the other seven million dollars, I think some of it was increment, some of it may not have been to purchase some lands. And the CDA was involved too. So they, you may know better than this Madam Mayor, but they may have put some cap, you know, have some cash outlay to buy some land and then sold it again to different, they were very much a part of our.
We did something very unique in that regard. We had the CDA be, be consultant. So we had a third party and we stepped away so there was no conflict of interest. And so they did all of the negotiations and the facilitation of all of that.
Well, that was a great example of, of a development and some redevelopment because there was existing buildings where we found alternatives than using Burnsville taxpayer money.
To grow it.
To grow it and create it. And so can that model be followed anywhere else in the city?
And, and the same thing also happened in TIF one and two. Because when I came into office, we were trying to get that built. But it, we also had a vision. It was for job creation businesses in TIF one and two. Because the only thing that was there was the Rosemount, at that, yeah, was Rosemount Industry, the Ames Business Center, Northern. And then all of those buildings around Irving. And everything else came in after I came into office. But the thing is, to get that going, we had to build houses on what's the little park that we.
Holloway?
Holloway. And that created increment. So we had homes there, created the increment to help motivate, get that done and we built some of the infrastructure in there. But the land was only forty-seven cents, but we didn't own the land at that point. We just facilitated and had tax increment financing. And now you look all over there and we have a lot of businesses that are job, that have jobs for our people. Yeah. Skip?
Madam Mayor, you are, are absolutely correct. We made good utilization of livable community grants in Heart of the City. One of the things I would like to make sure that the council is aware of is the requirements to get a livable communities grant are much more stringent.
Yeah.
And lately I have not seen a single livable communities grant go to any project that did not include affordable housing.
Yeah.
As a matter of fact, we applied for a grant for the expansion of our deck to facilitate the hotel and we did not get it because of that.
Yeah, the other thing that people need to know, the Heart of the City ramp was a partnership with MBTA. And so there were federal funds there. But we looked at every pot of money to get what we needed to, to really create an urban setting for this city and to create a pedestrian friendly, integrated, mixed use with a clear vision of what we wanted to see. Yeah, Kara?
So in your recommendations, and you, you recommended three possibilities that your staff liked, correct?
That's correct, Councilmember.
Why those three?
Those three address the most frequent issues that we come up against. Demolition of a building so that we have vacant land to rebuild on. Helping out in the, in the renovation or upgrade of existing older structures. And then similar to what we did in Heart of the City on, on larger projects, if we can assist in land assembly. They carry, while they, while they all carry risk, they carry lesser risk than us doing loans. But as, as various council members have pointed out, a grant is us giving someone money to spur development. Yes, that development eventually results in higher tax base, but it, it's not an immediate payback or anything else. It's a long term investment by us to maintain our, our commercial structures in town, to get new commercial structures. And more importantly, to keep those commercial structures having tenants in them because they're the types of buildings that people want to. because they're the types of buildings that people want to locate their businesses in. It's similar to if one person, you know, does some nice landscaping on your block, the next thing you know, everybody starts doing landscaping, but somebody has to start it out. The question is, do we want to help start it out?
So the other part that hasn't been, we don't pick winners and losers. People apply and we have an application form in place. And they have to comply with the requirements that we need to see a return in our investment. And so it was all included. And we've had that in our policy way back when we had, when we started the TIF districts. So that people understood if they're going to apply for TIF financing or for abatement, they have to meet the requirements. So it's about the city. It's always about Burnsville. Yes, Dan?
I want to touch on land assembly because that was part of our discussion the last time around or last two or three times around. Is there any experience out there that, that we can tap into? Historical data to tell us that when a port authority or an economic development authority does get into land assembly, they get into it because the private sector is not able to? And I think of the land right around, you know, Ashelfords and all, you know, those four or five different owners with various parcels in this particular zone. And it doesn't seem as though anyone there is attempting to purchase land from its neighbors to assemble a big enough lot to then have a developer come in and bring a big project in. And I would assume that's kind of entered port authority or economic development authorities to step in and do that. But when they do, how much recovery does that authority end up experiencing? Are they getting a hundred percent back eventually in the sale of the land? Or with the sale of land and the increment tax? Do they eventually get, you know, return on investment? Or is it just a straight-up cost? It, it costs, it costs X and what they ultimately get is quite a bit less than that. But that's just what, what is required to make it happen. I mean, I think we've somewhat stayed away from land assembly because it's, you know, for me, it's a bit of a, I don't, it's kind of like subsidy. I don't really like the government getting involved in the private sector's business. But when you sit and watch land sit for years and years and years and you have multiple owners and there isn't anybody, there's not a developer willing to come in and try and assemble it, should we even get into that business?
I'm going to have Skip answer and then we'll, I'll get to you because the Port Authority of St. Paul. So please go.
The Port Authority does, does do a lot of land assembly. I cannot right now, Councilmember Key Lee, tell you what their return is, but we can certainly get that information for you if that's something-
You have two things to get back information. So I'm seeing that this is not going to be a, a decision tonight on any of this because there is information that Dan has asked staff to bring back and you have information that you've asked staff to bring back. And so Bill, you have a comment?
Well, I'm just trying to figure, other than Skip, other than condemnation, which is subject to all kinds of legal issues. Cities trying to assemble land, it's not a blighted area. I mean, we're, you know, once the, you know, so some other landowners down there don't want to sell unless we pay them a premium price that we'd go in and try to assemble land by paying a premium price so that maybe some other developer could come in and then would pay us a premium price? Why, why wouldn't a developer go in if, if, I mean, I, I don't see that we have any other greater rights other than condemnation. And I can't think of any legal reason that we could go down there and start condemning property down there to take it, to assemble it. So I, again, it, it, the reality of it, it doesn't make any sense to me based on Burns, what I know about Burnsville.
It's, yeah, it's not about condemnation by any stretch.
What I'm saying, other than need some big premium for some other developer-
It depends. In a business transaction, in a business deal, in a land acquisition transaction, there's a lot of factors to take in consideration.
Why don't we just-
It would have to be a negotiation. It would have to be a case-by-case basis and it may not even work. I mean, I'm not advocating that if St. Paul Port Authority is, they, they just kind of go in and pay whatever people want to assemble it. That's certainly not what I would advocate.
Yeah, let's, let's have staff bring back information and give us some of the models or some of the experiences, some of the, what, how St. Paul did that. I know what we did, but ours is a very different. So anyway, if, are there any other information you would like staff to bring back?
It's a good discussion, thank you.
Yeah, it is, yes, Kara.
You had mentioned St. Louis Park. Is there any way that we could get some expert information from St. Louis Park itself?
Yeah, their city manager lives in Burnsville.
Yeah, I know, which would be somewhat handy. Someone might know who that is.
Yeah, we, we do know who he is.
You know, because we do have people address us. So is that something we could arrange?
Oh, we, we can, we can have, and we've done that many times. Had someone from another city come and talk to us about what they did.
Yeah.
And so that's possible.
I would love that.
The other is Hopkins. Hopkins is a small little city, but they're doing a lot of things in terms of what they're doing. Yeah, so that's, see if someone from St. Louis Park and Hopkins can give us their experience. And I think Bloomington did a big land assembly around American Boulevard.
So did Egan.
Yeah, so, well, Egan did the big one on the Cedar, on Cedar Vale. But that, that was a, that was a long play for Egan. I don't know about that one. No, I, I don't think, yeah. Yeah, well, now it's really nice, yes, Jenny.
I wonder if it would be helpful to have our financial advisors come in because they worked with a lot of these cities on putting these deals together. So they can tell you what they did in St. Louis Park, St. Anthony, Egan. It was, I think Ellers did all of those, so we can have Ellers come in.
Yes.
So if you're going to have the financial advisors come in, could they talk about how does this affect us as a city?
Oh, yeah, they've done that with the Heart of the City. Oh, yeah.
They're looking at our bondings and all that, like-
Oh, my gosh, yes.
How does it affect the city when you're doing things like that? Are you being complacent or are you being positive and moving forward?
So, and, and, and we have, because our financial advisor at this, that time was Springstead. So Springstead came all of it. But then when we were doing the projects, Ellers was the other financial folks. But they came on the side of the developer in, in working with all of that. But I think it'll be interesting to understand what Bloomington did because that was a big piece. But St. Louis Park and Hopkins and there's others who have done it too. Yeah.
There's plenty of examples around the state or the country, obviously.
I mean, we have our own example, but it's good to have other people's examples.
We learn from it, learn from their mistakes and find out what they succeeded on. Just one closing comment. I, I just want to compliment Councilmember Coughlin. Having a lawyer on council who's got experience in real estate keeps us in check, right? It, it really is great to hear that perspective and, and, because it, it does affect the dialogue and the discussion and the direction and ultimately, so I'm very glad to have-
But it allows us to be cautious, as we continued. You know, we were very cautious when we did the Heart of the City. But, but we had a lot of stakeholders also in place. But we also had land that was blighted, filled with crime, all kinds of stuff. And now it's, there's no crime in that area.
We used to hear Club Cancun ads on the radio when I first moved here.
Yeah, Jenny?
Madam Mayor, I just want to make sure we've got the correct list of things to bring back. So first thing is, we were asked about the payback on the St. Paul Port Authority on land assembly. I think I had to know how much public dollars went into Heart of the City. We'll get you that exact number.
Which you just gave us. That, that's already-
Okay, so we don't have to do, we don't have to do that one?
No, basically zero tax dollars, it was all grants and everything.
No, there were other, there were some tax dollars.
Oh, there was some tax dollars?
Yeah, there was, it was seven thousand.
We'll bring it, we'll bring it, just for clarification, we'll throw it in the background.
Yes, could we get that?
So you have it. And then we'll-
That's actually on the city's asset. That's not on the public asset point of view. I think we need to be clear on all, all of those things because there's the private sector and then there's the public sector piece.
We can, we can put that together. And then lastly, get some information from some other cities that have done redevelopment and land assembly. St. Louis Park, Hopkins, Bloomington, Egan, perhaps have Ellers come in if they've dealt with these cities.
And demo?
Anything else?
The demo.
Did you cover demo in there as far as the, some demo experience of other cities where they-
Because that was your first question?
Yeah.
Yeah, so that was the, so I was listening and so the, and the demolition fund, you can also talk, but as I read the background and everything else that I know from past experience, the money comes from someplace and you've already said that it'll come from the EDA levy. And we're way below what that threshold is for us and it, we have capacity there. That's a different discussion on, on, on how we want to fund that. But this is part of the mechanics of getting it, what that is. So are you clear, is staff clear?
With the four items, yes.
With the four items, okay. Anything else from council?
Just thank you again. This has been the best discussion we've had on this in a, in a while. And, and I appreciate it. Skip, again, great presentation and it really got a good discussion going.
But also, I appreciate all of the background. I mean, for me, I just like reading and I get reeducated again and I, oh, I remember that. But then I, and then a lot of things pop up like, oh, I remember when the land at TIF one and two was only forty-seven cents a foot. Now it's seven and eight dollars a foot. I don't think we have any land left out there. But the last one, when they, for that basketball and when H-
Midwest volleyball.
Midwest volleyball.
Yeah, the, yeah. That was seven to eight bucks a foot when they bought that, to build that building. Yeah, okay, anything else?
There's one thing in our background that we didn't really talk about specifically related to the city's land assembly guideline. Policy states that staff may work with willing landowners that specifically targeted geographic areas, et cetera, et cetera. But the interpretation is that staff is, you know, we're not proactively as a city going out looking, but we're responding when people inquire.
We've never done that.
Right?
That's correct.
Is it, is it that we're only interested in having a discussion for people who come to us? And obviously there's a reason for that from a land valuation standpoint.
That's a different discussion that we have to have, whether we want to be more proactive rather than reactive. That's part of the, a later discussion, I would say.
Agreed. I want, let's cover that when we follow up on this.
Anything else?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Staff is clear? Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, round table. Beekeeping, who brought that to the table?
Madam Mayor, that's a staff item. Do you want me to take it, Jenny, or you want to go ahead?
I can do it real quick.
All right, go ahead.
As you may recall, we did talk about this at Council All-Day Work Session three or four years ago because the question came up and direction was given to continue to prohibit it. So we had specific language in the code that dealt with keeping of animals, which included insects and bees. So nothing had to change for us to continue to prohibit it. When we adopted IPMC, the language changed a little bit to infestation. And infestation is different from keeping or animal keeping. So now there's kind of a gray area. So we would like to, at least from an enforcement-
Clean it up.
Yeah, from an enforcement standpoint. So if we still want to not allow it, we can bring forward that ordinance. If it's something you want to talk about and now allow, we'll come back to a future work session with options.
Well, the reason why we said not allowed is because people were afraid with the way our lots are in the close proximity. So nobody has come to say that they want bees.
We've had one, we get about one inquiry a year.
Yeah, okay, on a staff level?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm stalling that camp.
Okay, yeah, I know. So I know-
Is that with a net to protect you from bees?
The camp is not allowed. Yeah, because we did say there was, down in southwest Burnsville, people own two, three, four acres and that's enough land for them if they wanted to. So I'm still in favor of the people in southwest Burnsville with larger acres. If they wanted to have, then they can because they have a lot of land and it's not going to be close to the next neighbor or children around where you might be allergic to and, you know. I think it's all a matter of perception, but, about bees, but it's okay.
I'm looking for direction. If there's, if there's, if three, if three of you want to allow themselves Burnsville, then I'll come back with that.
Are you in the, in the camp of leave it the way it is because there is not a demand?
I've never met a beekeeper, so I'm not sure if that's all involved, to be honest with you.
Okay, so you're in the, in the-
But I agree if there's a lot of land and, and we'd have to determine what that land size might be. I mean, we have a lot of land at a house right across the street from City Hall too, so it's-
No, that's all part of ours. It's a park.
No, 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 I'm talking about the house on the other side of Nicollet Avenue. That's the, the old horse, that old pony farm. They've got a fair amount of property over there.
Yeah.
I'm just for leaving it as it is or otherwise we're just creating something that nobody is asking for.
Yeah, okay, Kara?
I'm for allowing it and I'm allergic to bees.
Okay, Dan?
On larger acres.
Larger acres?
Yeah, I just, and, you know, I, but sort of a policy in search of a, a solution, in search of a-
A problem.
An applicant. We don't, we have one and it's not in a large.
Yeah.
So should we be proactive and set the zone up or set the policy up and allow it in larger acres? Or wait till somebody calls?
Well, right now, say what you want, Dan.
I just love the B movie, it's awesome.
Okay, but what do you want us to do? Just leave it as it is and enlarge it down in southwest Burnsville.
Yeah, that's what I'm in favor of.
Okay, Jenny?
Okay, Madam Mayor, so we do have a couple, I believe, that residents that live in southwest Burnsville that may have these. So if we get a complaint and the ordinance says you can't have it, then we would go down that enforcement road. But if the majority of you are okay in southwest Burnsville,
Southwest Burnsville is okay.
Then we'll say you can have them, but only in the R1A in southwest Burnsville and then they're fine. And that's where our last inquiry came from, was from a resident in southwest Burnsville.
It's usually the people down in southwest Burnsville. Are you okay with southwest?
Yes.
Okay?
Is this an ordinance change?
Okay, okay.
We'll bring that, we'll bring that to you then.
All right, southwest Burnsville, yes.
Only, okay. Thank you very much.
Okay. The next one, banners in the heart of the city.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gustafson brought it up.
I know, I know you've talked about it before. You know, I just look at what we're doing in our city today with really kind of bringing community together. I look at what the Fire Musters up to these days, the International Festival, our winter lighting. We have so many events that happen in our Heart of the City. And we have this great street that has twenty thousand cars a day that go down it that we can actually just tell people what's going on. It's, whether it's our music in the park, the, the winter lighting ceremony, the international festivals. And I'd like to see something, if the city's involved in it, if we're part of it, that you can put up a banner for that week or two before any of these events so that we can take advantage of all these people going up and down the streets to enhance the, the participation in our events and make them more successful. I, I look at it as a good opportunity to bring community together. Quite frankly, you know, having been involved in festivals myself, those little signs are kind of nice, but most people can't read them when you're driving down the street anyways. And the bigger ones actually make a better impact.
Okay, you did read what we said they could, but the thing is, you have, you have private property?
I understand, but we do have some city right-of-way. I understand the staff looked at it at one time where they could put some poles up on both sides on our right-of-way so we could have a place to actually hang banners. And that's, that's, and I'm talking, I'm talking about around the Nicollet Common Park area, that, down specifically in the Heart of the City for that sort of thing.
That's where we discussed it last year.
I know, and we said no. And, okay, I'm going to go to Bill and then to you.
You know, we're-
Yeah, because he, yes, I know. And you know what? If you want to have that, you can have bannerets just like St. Paul and Minneapolis has. So right now in St. Paul, you drive down and it's all about the hockey people coming in. But they pay for it and you can see the banner and you can, yeah. And when you do the late, the, what's it, the one that they have, Lopet, Lopet?
Oh, the Lopet, yeah, Lopet in Minneapolis.
They have all the bannerets. They don't have big banners across their street. Bill?
I have great respect for Dan and Dan. And I have great respect for your argument. It's just that for the same reasons that we talked about at great length before, I'm just not for it, so.
Yeah, okay, Dan, Kate?
Well, I haven't changed my position from May of last year is about the time we talked about it. And I, there's a, there's a lot of hometown feel when you drive through smaller towns.
We're not a small town.
But our Heart of the City is exactly what we're trying to portray and create in the Heart of the City, is a small-town, close-knit community feel. That's, the, the park probably is the best, you know, gathering place, example of that. The Heart of the City is where the city comes together to festive, to park, to see a performance. I'd like to expand the, the usage of it to include events at the PAC because that- I'd like to expand the usage of it to include events at the PAC, because that monument sign with the LED reader is absolutely, and let me preface that, there's two factors that drive me on this. Number one, the, as I just noted, the heart of the city, the coming together, the real small-town community feel. And number two, my professional marketing side. That monument sign with the reader board does not pass muster for me at all in any measurement whatsoever as a marketing tool for the Ames Center. It is not big enough, it is difficult to read, and when you're going down Nicollet and you're, you've got twenty thousand cars a day, you're kind of, you're on a thoroughfare. And you just don't have the ability to turn your head, if you're going northbound, to see if you can even see through the cars, because it's so low to the ground. It's a, it's a terrible sign, in my opinion. So putting a banner across Nicollet with the Fire Muster, with the heart, with the International Festival, and with major events like, what's the guy coming from CBS show? Who's the artist that the Ames Center booked him coming up? He's, what's, he's the, he's-
Schaefer.
Paul Schaefer. I'm sorry, the artist, musician, sorry, the musician from CBS, from Letterman. When you got Paul Schaefer performing at our theater in Burnsville, I don't know why in the world that wouldn't be on a banner across Nicollet, you know, in advance of Paul Schaefer coming. Now, that does create some situations. We have a pretty wide street, so there's really two opportunities for messages, one on north and one on southbound. In theory, you could. Might be one banner strong, but it could have two halves. So this is a huge impact to the community as far as making the heart of the city feel like the heart of the city and where people come together, and it's also a fantastic marketing opportunity for the Ames Center to sell more tickets. Since we own it, that's self-serving, but I don't mind it. I think it's the right thing to do.
I believe that Heather's already talked to all of you about the Nicollet Commons Park and the fence, and what would happen to the, to the sign, to the digital sign for the Ames Center? It's going to be elevated, because the fence would block it?
Well, Madam Mayor, we're still looking at options on that to figure out what that-
It's an opportunity to raise that, that digital sign.
Possibly, possibly. We're looking at a bunch of different options on that.
So, and here's the thing, if we're going to do with a banner right in front of a residential and commercial area, then we need to have a meeting that is a public hearing where people can come and talk about that, because it's going to be a visual obstruction for a lot of the people who live there.
It's not meant to go right in front of your window, by chance. I mean, I was joking when I said it last year, attach the grommets to the outside of the building.
Yeah, it really is about respect of people's living condition in the heart of the city, and we found a solution for this in having that you can do it on the parkway. And I think that's, but it has to also get approval from the private sector, if you're going to be using it. Because that will be a private building, even though we have a skinny piece of right-of-way by the, by the sidewalk. So we need to make sure that it is a public hearing for people to understand what we're going to be doing.
I don't want you to get the impression that the banner is permanent 365. Okay, it's not, it's not a ban, like, there isn't always a banner up there.
Yeah, for all, how many times a year is that banner going to go up?
It might be eight to ten times total for a period of a week or two.
Still has an obstruction of view.
Might be five times. It could be the two festivals plus like three major performances that come through. I think we can determine that, yeah.
If you get it on, on the corners, on poles that go up and over, how's that obstructing anyone's view?
You're, you're going to, on the corner of 125th, 126th?
Exactly.
And, and, well, you know, there are people whose windows face this way, and if the banner is there, and also on Grand Marketplace. So, you know, I still would say we need to have a, if you want to go down that way, then it's so, I think what we have in place is sufficient. But Kara, what would you like? Because-
My question is on the cost.
Yeah, how much is it going to cost in eight times a year?
That, I mean, that, that will be a big factor for me is how much, how much it will cost. I do understand, I get what you're talking about on the small-town feel. I also understand on the marketing as well. I completely understand that. But yeah, my question is on the cost.
Heather?
Madam Mayor, last time we looked at this, Councilmember Schles, I think, last time we looked at this, it was around eighty thousand, I think, is how much it was to do the installation of the poles. We had talked at one point in time about having, about charging for the banner. I think that's a problem in the right-of-way. We found out that legally, that's, that's an issue, and so we can't charge for banners in the right-of-way per our city attorney. And, and so that's, so roughly it's the installation cost and then the cost of the banners.
Is it a state law?
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, and it's, so, and I think that's the reason why we went down and we said no to that, and said there, you can have banners, but there's a different way of doing that. Yes, Bill?
Just in that alone, you know, at the public hearing, I'd like that to show the public that we'd be willing to, you know, that I would not be willing to spend eighty thousand dollars, you know, just to set that up again.
Yeah.
I was already down on spending six thousand dollars to expedite something.
Yeah, yeah, yes.
It all adds up.
Just add a zero.
It adds up, it all adds up.
Add a zero.
Yeah.
Let's, like any business investment, if you just focus on the cost, your business will never do anything. You'll never grow, you'll never get a return on investment. You have to look at what this will do to the Ames Center, what it will do to the community as a feel, so there's some just feel.
The Ames Center is doing very well.
Well, it could do a lot better.
Well, I know it.
It's doing very well, but it's not, nowhere near its peak.
So, so when you're putting up a banner for the different performances, you know, I would like to see first what's going to happen when we do the security fence around Nicollet Commons Park, and what that, what that's going to look like in terms of visibility of marketing all of the events that's going on there.
This is going to be quite a bit higher near.
And then, yeah, I just, I think there has to be a public hearing. People need to know.
I will say that I'm shocked that it's eighty thousand dollars for two poles, though.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Gustafson, that was an estimate based on moving a lot of things that are already in the right-of-way. There's fiber in the right-of-way, there's some other things, and so, yeah, no, we were shocked as well, to be honest.
Well, the thing is, we also put in place, when we put all of that pedestrian and the concrete and everything, it's all there, so you're going to have to-
Can you move them to a different location, which would be less expensive?
My recollection is council, all of Nicollet is packed with all different kinds of utilities at varying, because there's so much going through that corridor. I don't know that there's-
One of the landowners says we could put, we'll put it on his property.
Um, that's a-
Different.
That's different, yeah.
Yeah.
If, can I ask you?
Yes, Regina.
Because of the height of the-
Come to the table.
Sorry, you can come right here.
Yeah.
Regina did the presentation on this last time.
I know, she did.
Because of the height of the building and how, buildings and how they line up, the height could be problematic, especially when you have-
And it's also the grade change?
The change in grade, as well as accommodating for truck traffic, so you have your big rigs coming through. We have to make sure that the banner height is high enough, and the poles need to withstand the wind loads as well for the stretch of street, no matter where they're located, because Nicollet is a wider street compared to, let's say, a Hopkins or your typical Main Street USA, that these will have to be substantial, what those will look like. If the council, you know, gives direction to look into it further, I think, you know, they could probably, an expert probably do a sketchup of some sort.
I think we already looked into it last year. I'm with Bill.
We just had a discussion and we never got further than that.
No, we already said what was allowed. We gave the Fire Muster how many, and they had to do a map and give it to staff. There were also a banner on-
Oh, yeah, for Fire Muster, yeah, that's all predefined.
Yes, and they could do that, and it's any event, they just have to pay for it, not the city. They have to pay for it. But they also have to get permission from the property owners to hook into their buildings.
Sure. I mean, that's one option, and I've seen this, and this is one that I found on the web real easy, but there's one in Uptown that stretches between, I think it's over the intersection, actually, it goes diagonal across the intersection from building to building, it's pretty big.
Yeah.
This is one that goes building to building, so it doesn't have poles.
It connects to private property.
Yeah.
And that's just one-
Yeah, and it's over the intersection, and I've seen it.
It's one in each way.
I think it's Hennepin and Lake, and Lake Street.
A big thick pole.
I think it's Hennepin and Lake, where that is, where you see, where you see that?
Yes, Hennepin and Lake, yeah.
Hennepin and Lake, but it goes cross and it's hooked onto buildings, so you have to get the permission. So, what do you want us?
Here's one that's poles, and it still is, though, a, I call it two-lane plus bike or whatever, so it's not as wide as Nicollet. It's, but it is on poles. I think I found this one actually last year when we were looking at it. So, a little narrower, so the diameter, sorry, the diameter of pole for our stretch would have to be stronger, obviously, to hold.
But look at where those poles are anchored.
Right in the, right along the edge of the road, yeah, right in the right-of-way.
Then look at where, what, what's in the, in the heart of the city and what's underneath that. Because remember, we buried the electrical lines.
Well, there's no question it's a, it's a significant investment. I don't know what the life expectancy of these poles are, if they last thirty years, what kind of maintenance, and it's kind of a really strong light pole, right? The light poles are out there, aluminum poles are out for forty years.
Okay, we need to give staff direction. Kara, you've heard eighty thousand?
Yeah.
And then all, it might be even more because of the way the infrastructure. Do you want staff to do more work on this, or?
I would like to look a little more, especially on if it is an option to go building to building.
We already said that they can go building to building, but they have to do, they have to ask permission of the building owner.
Right, and that would be something that, I, I mean, here's the thing, if, if building owners are already like, no way, I mean, that option is, is dead in the water to not even look at.
It's already something that they can do now. We already said that they can do that. They just have to go and get the permission. I think what Dan and Dan are saying is that we put the poles up.
So are you guys still wanting to look at the poles?
If we can do it, if we can do it cheaper than eighty thousand dollars, I would.
Yeah, because I, because I'm also surprised with the cost, too.
Maybe it's another area on Nicollet Avenue. I just want to take advantage of the traffic. Between Nicollet and Burnsville Parkway, there's thirty-eight thousand cars a day flying around up there, it's like-
So am I understanding there are three votes here to give staff direction to bring back more information?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, staff, bring back more, more information on the poles.
Madam Mayor, may I suggest we'll probably bring it back as part of the budget process then, since there is a significant financial cost. Does that make sense to folks?
Yeah, sure.
That makes sense.
Yeah, and that'll, and not in June, because we get an overview.
No, it would be when we do the Capitol.
It'll probably be August.
In the Capitol, during the Capitol.
Yeah, and, and September or later than that. Okay. So is everybody okay? We already have something on the books, if people want to do it. We already have something on the books for a banner.
You're asking me?
Yeah.
I don't know. I would have to look it up, so.
Yeah, Regina? I do know that, we do have something on the books already, right? They can have a banner on, on the parkway, but they have to get permission.
They would have to get permission from the property owner. I think it will be challenging because of how the buildings line up.
That's right, and that's what we talked about.
And so, it may not be your perfect perpendicular banner.
Yeah, okay.
Well, and that's what I'm wondering, is, I mean, are there even buildings that are good candidates?
Yeah.
I, I don't know. I mean, maybe staff could kind of help with that.
Okay.
Can I bring up one more thing before we close this?
I'm going to go to Bill, and then I'll come to you.
You know, as we were discussing that, too, there'll be legal issues, building owners will be worried about damage to buildings, everything else, that they're assuming that risk for, I'm not sure what return, unless they think they can make a profit, I suppose, by doing it. So, that, that'd be my only, there'd be no incentive for them unless they have a, two across the street have a great community feel. And then if you add a multi-family, you know, apartment building or anything else, then boy, I can't even imagine the association issues that go with trying to decide who's got the right to decide whether you could do that, is part of that, but just a comment.
Yeah.
Dan?
The other question, if this isn't going to happen with banners, is our ordinance allow organizations like the International Festival, Fire Muster, to put bannerets on Nicollet Avenue on the light poles that are there right now?
Yeah, we do, because the-
I didn't know, so I'm asking that question.
The Community Foundation puts up, well, we put up flags, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, and, and we can change the bannerets, that's something we can do, and they can, bannerets are really nice, they work.
They're expensive, we did it in a park one time, you know.
Well, you know, but then, then, you know, we don't do it. Whoever is the festival would put up their own banners, just like Nicollet Plaza puts up their banners, bannerets. So, if you want it, then the festival would put up the banners, not the city. But we would just allow it to be on our asset.
For the bannerets, though, if it is advertising something that is for the city-
Yeah.
Then we would be picking up the cost, correct?
No, it can, what we can say is that they can use our asset, but they pay for it. That's what the Community Foundation and the Rotary did. And then they had their volunteers put it up. But right now, I think we want our people to put it up, so they don't mess up our-
Right, so if it was something advertising at the Ames Center, though?
Yeah, and you know what? We have a digital read, and maybe with what's going to be improved at Nicollet Commons Park because of the security fence that Heather talked to all of us, let's find out what that's going to look like.
Okay, and then also for the bannerets, what's the maximum size?
We already have that in place.
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Schles, we don't know that, so we'll have to get the answer to the banneret question. I think, right now, we also need to look into our agreement with the Community Foundation about what, what's up there, because right now, they sort of have jurisdiction, not jurisdiction, but, you know, we certainly-
Because they're the ones who purchase all the bannerets. They raise the money for the bannerets.
But we'll look into that, and we can bring that information back to you all.
Yeah, I would like that. Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Yeah, and they, and, and so there's no cost to the city with the bannerets that we have now? It's the Burnsville Community Foundation who raises the money for the bannerets. And so, if the Fire Muster wants to put up bannerets, then I think they should pay for it as well. It's on our asset.
Personally, that's a one-calorie banner. It's not worth anything for marketing of an event. They're so small, you don't even notice it.
Well, it's, there's, you know, I go down St. Paul with all of the hockey stuff that's going on, and they have welcome hockey players. Okay, I think we already have all of the information for staff to move forward. Staff, is it clear? Okay, thank you. Scheduling options for governance, Heather, this is-
Madam, Madam Mayor, there were two options. We were talking about having a fourth meeting, and then Councilmember Keely suggested maybe you all might be interested in, in just having a longer, regular meeting.
Yeah.
Which we thought was a good option.
Yeah, I think we talked about it.
And so the question is, is which would the council prefer? And then this, your background does show that we would start, if you wanted to do a regular council meeting, then we would start doing the governance pieces. We'd do a white paper on July eighteenth on the short-term rentals, and then we would do a separate meeting after the regular meeting on August eighth to start talking about the accessory, drop homes and accessory dwelling units. And so, and so we would instead...
And those meetings, we don't have a lot on the regular agenda, right?
Correct.
Because that's, that was my understanding in conversation with Councilmember Keely. Instead of doing the fourth Tuesday schedule that we always had for governance, and it works, because if we don't have anything on a regular agenda, or just one item or two, then we can have that.
And we would, we would schedule, we would probably notice those as, you know, seven fifteen, or the, after the council meeting, whichever is later, that kind of thing. We would have a time certain, but that's sort of how, what we talked about, so.
It's efficient. Is that okay?
I'm good.
Everybody? Okay, good. Okay, and the other is your, your review.
We have two times here, April twenty-fourth at three o'clock or later, Tuesday, April, I think the council had indicated they'd like it to be between these timeframes, and April twenty-fifth at four-thirty PM or later.
Yeah, and there is no meeting on April...
There is no meeting on April twenty-fifth.
Yeah, so I'm okay with either one of those dates.
You do?
Yeah, it really doesn't matter.
Any timeframe that folks are more interested in?
We need to be after a certain time.
No, Monday at three is good, Tuesday at four-thirty is good. Is that for you? Okay. Dan, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay. Dan K?
Mm-hmm.
Okay?
Pardon, I'm looking.
Oh, okay.
Dan's the only one that doesn't have a real flexible schedule.
She always knows my schedule, so I know that she already looked at my schedule.
Are you more of a social butterfly?
No, I'm a...
She controls my life.
Butterfly. I have long days.
You do.
So Monday or Tuesday is the option?
Yeah.
What's the Monday, April twenty-fourth? Why is it?
You're going out of town on the twenty-sixth, you said?
Correct.
That's why we were trying to get that in before the last...
Anytime after three.
You were just, instead of tagging it to the meeting?
No, there's no meetings.
Well, there's no meetings.
There are no meetings. There are no meetings. This is the fourth, fourth week, and we don't have meetings in the fourth week.
Well, then I, in that case, I would do the twenty-fifth, Tuesday.
Okay.
What time?
Four-thirty?
Four-thirty?
Okay.
I mean, or later. I mean, does everybody want to do four-thirty but me?
Yeah.
Does anybody else work a daytime job?
We all have...
I mean, like, daytime job.
We have more flexibility than you.
Seven to seven, that kind of day.
For some of us, it's like, you know, when you have long days, it's nice to get home a little earlier.
Oh, I'm with you.
Yeah.
And someone on the other end of my recent text is with you as well.
Yeah. To get home a little earlier. Yes. Okay, four-thirty?
On a Tuesday, yes.
Okay, four-thirty. All right?
Thank you.
Okay, very good. Reports. Anybody have reports? Bill?
Real quick, Community Foundation, they're done with their website.
Okay. Great.
None this time.
Okay. Kara? Dan?
Fine, I'm going to be the bad guy and have a big report.
Oh, yeah, be the bad guy, because I don't have anything.
Really?
No.
Wow, you're making me feel bad.
You know, my meetings are quarterly, and, and you guys do not want to know about my meetings at the state. You guys do not want to know. That's not part of this.
All right, I'll try and encapsulate the Fire Muster meeting, first off. We, we're going to do officers' elections, but put it off because our board chair was on vacation somewhere south where it was nice and warm. We did have a very good discussion. We had a presentation by our marketing board member and a presentation by our brand-new fundraising chair, Vince Workman, who's on our planning commission. And both of them gave outstanding presentations covering history and where we're going and what the goals are for this year. The marketing, I'm just going to let this really quickly cat out of the bag. It's not final, but we're rebranding, in the process of rebranding, the Fire Muster. That is the logo that you are all very used to. It's very classic.
Are you, are you, are you sure you want that out on the...
You're right.
I think if it's on draft, I would say to you, don't do it.
It's, it's...
Yeah, don't do it. Don't do it. You, you don't, you're, you do not want to have it out there when people, just say you're doing a rebranding.
So...
That's all.
It's, it is, it's very exciting. We have a subgroup.
When they give you authority to speak to that when it's final, then do it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I will do that. We, we have an exciting subgroup working on all kinds of really exciting things for the Fire Muster. Branding, marketing, advertising, concept changes that are going to significantly enhance the attendance. And I'll bring a request at a future work session related to some of that stuff. The, I, I think this is going to be one of the best, most successful Fire Musters we've had in a long time because of the changes that we're talking about. We did actually put in one thing last year for everybody who went. We had craft beer, and that's going to be, again, this year, if not expanded. And I expect that we'll have a significantly higher attendance. And so we're going to attract some different, and new food trucks, and some different and new attractions to engage and interact with the public. I will give a hats off to a couple people who are watching right now, I believe, that some really fresh ideas have come with some very fresh faces onto the board. And their, the energy level for the Fire Muster Board is higher than I've seen since probably ten years. Really exciting stuff. So, more to come. MVTA, did I go over the ridership survey the last time we got together?
You did. You know what? It's like my, it's like, it's like my...
I have a very thick PowerPoint I'd like to go through.
My MVTA report, the minutes are always in a monitoring report. Read it.
I've got, I've got, I've got a very quick summary of, of this multi-page document.
Two, three sentences.
Two-point-nine million, I'll remember that. Two-point-nine million in ridership. It was the second-best year ever. The prior year was twenty-fifteen. We're just two percent off of that. We are second in all the opt-outs, normally third, so we've moved up.
Really? Who's number one?
I think that had something, I don't know, I did, I put a question mark, I missed that.
I think it's Southwest.
I think so. We bumped up because of the incorporation of Shakopee, Prior Lake.
And Prior Lake, yeah.
We had record State Fair attendance last fall, seventy-seven thousand riders to the State Fair.
But we always have record years in the State Fair.
Yeah, that, that ride...
And it still grows.
Yep, that program just continues to get better and better.
That's the only way to go to the State Fair, is take MVTA.
And there's been, so you probably have read, they're testing suburban to suburban routes. The first test was not the greatest, so they retooled it, came back with another one, it's Route four ninety-five.
But is that because there wasn't enough marketing and communication?
Could very well be. I mean, that, there, there is, there's a lot of factors that could contribute to that. I think getting the, the businesses engaged for the last mile was really the key in making four ninety-five work. Eighteen thousand rides, and it, it went on since late August when it launched, so eighteen thousand rides in the last few months of the year. And there was a news release that, that went out recently with all these results. But if you'd like a copy of the full-color PowerPoint, I'd be happy to provide it. And legislatively, we're following a lot of transportation bills and a lot of other bills, as this, as Heather well knows. And so we had a public policy, Burnsville Chamber Public Policy Meeting, but we are the only, I guess, really seriously noteworthy thing here is, I'm getting together tomorrow with Mendat, the county, the city, the chamber, and myself to talk about marketing tactics and strategy for getting the word out of the bridge over thirty-five on County Road Forty-two, which is going to start next month. And so we know that in prior discussions, we've, we're going to pause, suspend, sorry, our sign ordinance for businesses affected on forty-two. In the past, that started when construction actually started, now it's going to start when notices go out, which is about two weeks before. And so utilizing that, we're, we're basically putting together all the resources and making sure that we use some modern, up-to-date tactics to get the word out, which means push notifications rather than, oh, go find some long website that you can't ever remember and go fetch the information. So taking some new approaches to it. So I, I noticed in the county's presentation earlier, I looked in their communication, nothing modern, nothing contemporary about getting the word out. It's all still couched in technology and tactics used thirty years ago, twenty years ago. So a lot, a lot of people can learn some things from this, what we're going to do. So I'll, I'll update the rest of the council in an email form, and, or actually, maybe staff can, because I think, who's going to be there?
Ryan will be there.
Ryan? Is Steve going to be there, too?
No.
Is Marty going to be there?
I believe so.
So, yeah, I wanted to make sure the communication guy was there. So anyway, big, major disruption coming up for everybody watching at home. Six weeks, eastbound will be closed, six weeks, westbound will be closed. That is going to hurt very, very much to those businesses and the mall, which we know the mall doesn't need any more hurt than what it's getting with the retail transaction, or the retail climate in stores. Gordmans is the most recent closure and liquidation. They're actually going to stay open for a while, but they're going to liquidate all